Thank you all. We're starting to introduce two minutes late, but I hereby call order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for November 1st, 2023. Sherry, would you call roll, please?
Chair Quilci?
Here.
Vice Chair Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Trent, if you would lead us on the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any recommended changes to the agenda, Lucas?
No.
All right. Then we'll go on to public communications. I have two cards. And first up is Eric Knight and then Bill Miley. Eric Knight, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm here as the Executive Director of the Humane Society of Ventura County. I don't have an opinion either way on what I'm sure are plenty of topics regarding this development. I am here to make sure that the Planning Commission and developers and all involved are aware that there is an animal shelter at 402 Bryant Street. It's been there for forty-plus years. We, of course, take very good care of our dogs. We employ people especially to work on behavior and enrichment at the same time. We have a maximum capacity of forty-eight dogs and at any time have at least twenty, thirty dogs. We also have horses. We are an evac center for livestock and pigs and hogs, any number of things during times of disaster. So just want to make sure that the Planning Commission is aware that with an animal shelter comes the possibility of noise in dogs barking at any time of day or night, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And again, you know, it's ordinary stuff for an animal shelter and we do take good care of them and it's just something that happens.
Dogs and horses is normal rural noise.
Yep. Yeah. So that is why we decided to be here tonight, just to make sure that everybody is aware that there at 402 Bryant Street, just on the other side of that storage facility, is a dog kennel that has been there for a while. So that is all that I have in my notes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill Miley? I didn't mention it, but for the audience's edification, this is commenting on items of public business, not on the agenda. So this is not about the housing development yet. About anything else in the world you want to talk about.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I recently became aware of the Public Health Epidemiology Research Program at the University of California, San Francisco. It's called the Benioff Homelessness and Housing Initiative in their Center for Vulnerable Populations. The Democratic Club will host the presentation and a discussion on Sunday, November 12th, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Kent Hall. The speaker will be Ryan Asop, has a PhD in Epidemiology, Public Health Epidemiology, and he's with the Benioff Homelessness and Housing Initiative. Now, this is all about money that was given to the San Francisco UC San Francisco by Mark and Lynn Benioff. He is a co-founder of Salesforce. And they gave this initiative thirty million dollars in 2019. Professor Asop will be summarizing the recent statewide survey of homelessness that debunks the assumptions that homelessness is mostly caused by drug addiction, mental illness, and alcoholism, and that the homeless do not want to work or have a home. Instead, the study found homelessness is caused by deep poverty, high housing costs, and lack of affordable housing, and policy implications will be addressed. The public is invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak during public communications? Sherry, anyone out there in the electronic world with a hand raised?
Yes, one.
Please go ahead.
He's on, Mike Parrott.
Can you do it? I can't.
Mr. Parrott, you can go ahead.
Can't hear you. Still muted? Looks muted.
He needs to unmute himself.
Mister or Miss Parrott, you're still muted. We cannot hear anything you're saying. See your raised hand, but we can't hear you because you're muted at your end. I don't know how to fix this electronically or legally.
Chair, you're free to move on if you'd like.
Okay. If that person has dropped out, then we will move on from public communications to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, October 18th. Any commissioner with a refinement to those minutes?
Nope.
Then I would invite a motion for approval.
I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, let's call the roll on item one, please.
Quilci?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Terrific. And now, the highlight of the night.
Disclosure.
Item. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. That's right. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Murphy?
I have been to the site. I've had no ex parte contacts.
Same for me.
Same.
Same.
Very good. All right. Let's go on to our discussion item, then. A design review permit, DRP 23008. Lucas?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lucas Cybert, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is a Cabrillo Vista project, which is a fifty-unit affordable housing project located at 320 Bryant Street. For tonight's meeting, this is going to be taking place in a two-part. Tonight is really informational, ask lots of questions, and certainly staff is here to answer questions that we are able to answer, and I believe the applicant is here in full force, has a presentation as well, as staff does tonight. The point of tonight is staff will be providing a PowerPoint presentation and then the applicant will have a PowerPoint presentation as well. I would ask for both of those presentations to work themselves out and then hold your questions for the end, only because it'll probably be labor questions that could very well be answered through the PowerPoint on either side. The PowerPoints aren't meant to be overlapping. They kind of serve two very distinct purposes. So with that, let me start with my PowerPoint here. So as I said before, the item tonight is a fifty-unit affordable housing project on a vacant site, which is addressed 320 Bryant Street. Thank you, Larry. For some tonight, you're going to see this decision tree and it's going to look familiar to you. For others, it's not. Really what this is, is it's a decision tree for development projects. It's a host of different development projects. What we're focusing on tonight is this specific development project and this specific residential development application.
Shades of October 4th.
It goes through, it's going through itemized number of units, zone, affordability, type of development, density bonus, statute, housing, permissible, and level of review. Each of those are going to be covered in my presentation. So first, is this a residential development application? Well, residential units only, yes. And this is meaning it is a housing development project subject to SB 330 and Housing Accountability Act. Now, tonight, not only am I going to be going through some technical pieces at a higher level, the applicants will also be going through some of that in their presentation as well. Don't get lost in some of this. We covered this on October 4th. If you're questioning or curious about that, I invite you to go and listen in on that recording. Alex, to my left here, our attorney, went through a very riveting conversation and background on all the different housing laws. What this is not, it is not a mixed-use development, meaning it's not two-thirds square footage dedicated to residential. It is one hundred percent affordable, one hundred percent residential. It is not transitional housing or supportive housing. That's a completely different animal than what we're talking about tonight. Now, moving on to the second piece, number of units and its multiple units. So it's important to understand that this is a residential units only, meaning it's residential units only. Proposed project includes fifty-four rent units.
One of them is the caretaker, but...
But as affordable housing goes, one hundred percent affordable is considered, so forty-nine, even with one management unit, still considers itself one hundred percent affordable by state law. Deed restricted, low-income housing, and very low-income housing. I think those are two very important pieces, and certainly we'll be talking about the numbers in the coming slides, and certainly the applicant will be covering that as well. Next, zone, and not only zoning, but also land use or general plan. Zone and general plan designations. From a zoning standpoint, this base zoning is industrial light manufacturing. 320 Bryant Street is within the M1 zone. However, within the zoning is a special housing overlay. Within the special housing overlay, it allows for multifamily, affordable housing. The same thing is true with our general plan, land use. The base zoning is commercial manufacturing. Commercial manufacturing includes a special housing overlay. That special housing overlay allows for affordable housing. Moving on, affordable development or affordability. Now, this one talks about market rate versus affordable units. As proposed, this is an affordable project, as we had just mentioned previously. Forty-nine of the fifty units will be affordable to lower-income households. What does that mean? Broken down systematically, eight of the fifty units will be very low-income. Forty-one of those units will be low-income units, and as mentioned previously, one of those units will be earmarked for a management unit. Regardless, forty-nine of the fifty constitute it as being considered affordable housing, one hundred percent affordable housing. Now, type of development. This has been broken down into two different pieces. We're going to first talk about SB 35 as a project. Eligibility criteria. This is broken down into, that criteria talks about seventy-five percent of the perimeter of the site adjoins parcels developed with urban uses. Let me read that again. Seventy-five percent of the perimeter of the site adjoins parcels developed with urban uses. Well, what's urban uses? That's identified below. Urban uses include current or former residential, commercial, public institutional, transit or transportation passenger facility, retail use, or any combination of those uses that have just been listed. Now, for this project and the site itself, the surrounding uses include, to the south is the Condor Self-Storage Facility, zoned M1. To the west is the Caravan Outpost Hospitality Use, that's also zoned M1. To the north is Adamson Service Station, zoned M1. To the east is the Whispering Oaks Residential Use, zoned RS. In terms of density bonus, is it a yes or a no? It's a yes here. And here's why. Density bonus law is applicable as a yes because the proposed project includes at least five units. As you had seen in previous slides, how many units are we talking about? Fifty. It easily meets that mark. The project is entitled to the density bonus, it is entitled to incentives and concessions, waivers if it so chooses, and favorable parking ratio. Let's get into some of that. As a density bonus, it's a yes. It's a proposed project that's one hundred percent affordable housing. The proposed project is entitled, mind you, it's entitled up to eighty percent density bonus. The number for what that unit equates to, if we're talking about a project that's fifty units, or forty units in terms of how it would operate on the ground, that's an additional thirty, thirty-two units. So we're looking at seventy-two units is what will be allowed through the density bonus. Instead, what this proposed project is, is it's proposing a twenty-five percent increase in density, going from what the SPLA overlay allows for, which is forty units, to fifty units. So ten units in addition to what the SPLA, SPL overlay allows for. Incentives and concessions, it's a yes. The proposed project is one hundred percent affordable, serving lower-income households, and per state law, may benefit from up to four concessions or incentives. For what's being proposed by the developer, they're requesting two concessions. The first, and it's somewhat technical here, but the applicant will have a site plan that will lay out some of those different pieces here, is a reduction in the depth of onsite parking. Now, our code talks about twenty feet. They're looking to reduce that from twenty to eighteen.
That's the length of a parking space.
Correct. The second one is landscape area, or those areas where you typically have trees and landscape, ground cover, things like that. The minimum standard that we have in our code is six feet. What they're requesting is half that on the eastern side, which equates to three, and five feet along the western edge of the property. Here, I've got it broken down in terms of parking and the number of stories or the height. From a parking standpoint, there is, the proposed project is entitled seventy parking spaces as a minimum, and that's through state parking requirements. The project itself is proposing ninety-five parking spaces, so above what the state standard or statute would allow for. In terms of the number of stories, the proposed project is entitled to three additional stories. That's five stories in total. The SPL overlay identifies two stories, so they can go three more on top of that for a total of five. Or, and it's not an or to say you can do either one, it's that or you apply a thirty-three-foot additional height allowance, and that total would be sixty-three feet in total. Again, the SPL overlay identifies a thirty-foot height allowance. Here, the project is proposing instead, one additional story for three stories in total, as proposed, and eleven feet, seven and a half inches, for a total height of forty-one and change. Now, with this proposal, there are no waivers that are requested per the development standards. Moving on, we go into statute, Government Code 65589.5. Now, that's a funny number, but it has a meaning to it, and that is the Housing Accountability Act. Now, with this act, all residential development projects are subject to the Housing Accountability Act. It's the government code I just referenced. Unless a more specific statute applies within the government code. Simple, right? No. Highly complicated. I'm simplifying it here for the purposes of what we're looking at for this specific project. So hearing permissibility, are we allowed to have hearings? While we're here tonight, is that allowed? The answer is yes. Yes, we are. Subject to SB 330 and HA, which is the Housing Accountability Act I just mentioned previously, hearings are permissible, but there are limitations to those hearings, and that number is five. Five total hearings. Qualifying as a public hearing would be workshops, appeals, continuances conducted by city council or planning commission. These types of meetings that we're having tonight, those count. A continuance onto the next meeting, those would count as well. Not qualifying as a public hearing would be legislative approvals, applicant-led meetings, hearings before an application is determined complete, and hearings held by legislative bodies outside of the parameters of what we're looking at here. Here, we have a project before this body tonight for consideration for discussion. This counts. When it gets continued to the next meeting, that one will count as well. The last point that I want to mention here is level of review. And that's under the Housing Accountability Act. This gets a little bit technical, but I think it's important that I read some of this verbatim because this really speaks to findings, justification, something along those lines. I think those are familiar words that we all understand. So the Housing Accountability Act, which is that government code section, it talks about a local agency shall not disapprove a housing development project for very low, low, or moderate-income households, or condition approval in a manner that renders the housing development project infeasible for development for the use of very low, low, or moderate-income households, unless it makes written findings based upon, and this is legal term, preponderance of the evidence and the record as to one of the following. I'm going to identify the five that are here for tonight. The first one is, the jurisdiction has adopted a housing element, and the jurisdiction has met or exceeded its share of the regional housing needs allocation, also something that's referred to as RENA. Our number is fifty-three. Two, the housing development project, as proposed, would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, and there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact without rendering the development unaffordable to low and moderate-income households, or rendering the development of the emergency shelter financially infeasible. We don't have that here. As used as proposed, as used in this paragraph, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identifiable written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions as they exist at the date the application was deemed complete. It's a mouthful, right? There's more. The denial of the house, three, reads, denial of the housing development project or imposition of conditions is required in order to comply with the specific state or federal law, and there is no feasible method to comply without rendering the development unaffordable to low and moderate-income households, or rendering the development of the emergency shelter financially infeasible. Now, this is the third one. There's still two more. Four reads, the housing development project is proposed on land zoned for agriculture or resource preservation that is surrounded on two or more sides by land being used for agricultural or resource preservation purposes, or which does not have adequate water or wastewater facilities to serve the project. And then five reads, the housing development project or emergency shelter is inconsistent with both the jurisdiction's zoning ordinance and general plan land use designation as specified in any element of the general plan as it existed on the date of the application that was deemed complete. And the jurisdiction has adopted a revised housing element in accordance with Section 5, 65588. That is in substantial compliance with this article.
That's five things, but you haven't said which of them are true and which are not true in this case.
I think what will happen here is as the applicant, remember, hold questions to the end. This is only one piece to this presentation. We also have the applicant giving their presentation as well, which is fairly robust.
Just saying, that's a question coming.
Correct. Last, before the recommendations, is CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. Use by right, meaning the local government's review of the residential use may not require discretionary local government review or approval constituting a, what's referred to as through CEQA, a project for the purposes of CEQA. Projects eligible for SB 35 are considered ministerial projects, not subject to a CUP or any other non-legislative discretionary approval process. And then CEQA really only applies to discretionary projects. If SB 35 does not apply, there is still an exemption from CEQA because it's identified in the housing elements sites inventory for affordable housing, that housing element that we spent so much time going through, reviewing, and getting certified through HCD. And then it's zoned to permit residential by right with at least twenty percent of the units as being affordable to lower-income households. Here, this is one hundred percent affordable. Now, the recommendations are as follows. Pursuant to the Ojai Municipal Code, this requires that affordable housing on an SPL overlay site include, as a matrix for percentages, fifteen percent for very low-income households, fifteen percent for low-income, and then five percent for moderate. What this slide is basically identifying is that the Planning Commission will be a recommendation body that will then be forwarded on to city council. 102704G1 talks about housing mix. The project itself, as I had identified in the beginning, includes lower and low, but it does not include moderate. Because it does not include moderate, city council will ultimately make the determination whether to grant the exception, that exception which is identified within 102704G1. Now, this is not a government code section, this is our code. The requirements and the standards that were identified previously were mostly within government code. Tonight, what the commission is looking to consider is to receive this information, not only from staff's presentation, but also from the applicant's presentation, to ask clarifying questions of staff and the applicant, to open the matter for public hearing or public comment tonight, and then direct staff to prepare a resolution recommending an action to be forwarded to city council. And staff is recommending... And staff is recommending, or at least considering to recommend, that the agenda item be continued date certain to November fifteenth. Now with that, I'll stop my presentation, and I'll transition over to the applicant giving their presentation next. Unless there's some quick questions that the commission wants to ask as I'm doing this.
You'll come back to where this project does or does not comply with HAA later.
The five pieces?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we'll find out if the applicant has requested a variance to the five percent moderate.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all having a good time so far. Lots of education, thank you, Lucas. My name's Victoria Brady from Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. I'm the CFO with Cabrillo, but I've been also overseeing the development department for the last two years. You can't hear me? Is this better? Okay, I'll lean over, sorry, a little taller. So I just wanted to introduce you and explain a little bit about the project, about Cabrillo and who we are, if you could go on to the next slide.
Hold on one second. Sherry, if you can, can you turn her mic up a little bit? It is a little bit.
A little low?
Quiet, yeah.
Okay, I'll try and talk louder. Is that better?
Yeah, she can address it in the back.
As Lucas mentioned, Cabrillo Vista is a proposed fifty-unit project in the city of Ojai. The unit mix currently is slated for ten-one bedrooms, twenty-three two-bedrooms, and seventeen three-bedrooms. Go on to the next. And so this brings us to just a little bit of background. The team's going to go into more about the project specifically and the design components and so on. So Cabrillo, we've been in the industry for a little over forty years. We created in nineteen eighty-one. We've been providing affordable housing. We've built over forty-eight developments in the county of Ventura. We're also looking, we have a project slated in the county of Santa Barbara coming up next year as well. We have one project, I'm sorry, could you go next slide, sorry. So again, like I said, Cabrillo's been in the community for a very long time providing affordable housing. Our founding was within farmworker housing, that's where we started, with Rodney Fernandez was the co-founder. And we've, you know, built on from there, providing housing for seniors, special needs, farmworker, among many others. Next slide. This is just a quick overview of who Cabrillo is and what we've provided. We currently have five-hundred-and-twenty-seven units in our pipeline for development. We have twelve, over twelve-hundred units already built and in, within operations, and we manage all of those units ourselves. Next slide. Next slide. So just a little bit of background as to how we come about a development. So when we're looking into sites, we work with our team internally. Frank Thompson's here, he'll be speaking more later on the project. He's one of our housing consultants. We look for, you know, viable land, and then we look for the community and what the community truly needs. In Ojai, we felt that large-family housing was more beneficial to the community, both with bringing in children to the community for your school systems, as well as those that currently work here. A lot of the people that work here travel here. They don't actually get the opportunity to live in the community. We actually have somebody at one of our farmworker properties who would love to live here because she works here, but she lives in Santa Paula at one of our communities. So that's how we kind of base our overview of where we find the land and what fits that community. Next slide. See, the importance of the project, as I'm sure you've all heard, housing is of great need, both in Ventura County and California as a whole. We look to revitalize the neighborhood. In this particular instance, we're also looking to help reduce your traffic flow by allowing people that work here to live here because it's just simply unaffordable. This would provide much better commute for folks going up and down the thirty-three. Next slide. You may know that we already have a project in the city of Ojai on Montgomery Street, Montgomery Oaks. It was built in nineteen ninety-three. It's a lovely property, still very well-maintained, well-run by our property management team. They do a fantastic job. It has a community center, green building features, and we're always working on maintenance and upkeep to keep all of our properties well within standard. Next slide. Next, I'm going to leave this over to Barbara McReartis, who's our counsel, and she'll provide a little bit more information for you all.
Good evening, thank you, Victoria and commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm just going to do a little brief explanation about SB thirty-five, which is a law that was passed back in two thousand and eighteen that we're using. It's a means to, you know, it's like the legislature's been struggling with. We keep getting farther and farther and farther and farther behind in our housing. So SB thirty-five was something that was developed by the legislature to try to speed up the production of housing. And so they have in the statute a whole list of requirements, but if you can meet those, then you can get approved as a ministerial project. And so that's really what we're doing. And the goals are obviously to increase the supply of housing, you know, for low-income folks in the state. And trying to help with the outrageous, out-of-control rents that we have because of the, you know, the misfit of supply and demand. So the more affordable housing you can put in the pipeline, that may help to slow down rent increases. And also with respect to homelessness. You know, as you heard earlier, there's, you know, everybody's been studying homelessness now because it's just gotten so bad. And to a certain extent, it's because there's no place for people to live. And many people that are homeless had an apartment. The prices went up. They couldn't afford it. They started living in their cars. Eventually, people end up losing their cars, and it's just, it's a spiral down. And, you know, having more housing will help that because, you know, it's like you've got people that are homeless that have jobs. They work every day. They just can't afford a place. And so the more affordable housing we can put on the market, the better chance that we can provide housing opportunities for people in our community. And so basically, if you if you meet all the little requirements of SB thirty-five, which we believe we do, then the development permit is processed ministerially. What that means is that it doesn't go through a conditional use permit or plan development permit. It's processed ministerially, and there's a very set timeline to try to move it through the process quickly. So we've been very pleased in terms of the work we've been doing with Mr. Seabird and his staff in terms of trying to get everything aligned. This is a new, relatively new, two thousand and eighteen. I think it's probably the first time it's ever been used in Ojai. So it's a learning curve for everybody, but I think we're doing a pretty good job. You can go to the next slide. Okay, the other area that I was going to address a little bit is the density bonus law because that is one that oftentimes, there's a lot of confusion. You know, density bonus law was first created in nineteen seventy-nine. It has been amended. The statute has been amended twenty-six times. Okay, so it's, again, it's a work in progress with the legislature trying to look and see, what do we need to be able to create housing and to produce housing? So there've been changes to density bonus law over the years to try to accomplish that. And the goal, of course, is twofold. One is to try to maximize the production of housing in terms of, we have a limited amount of land. Certainly here in Ventura County, we really have a limited amount of land because of a soar. There's only so many places that we can even try to build. So you want it, when you have a piece of land, you want to maximize the number of units you can get on it. Because every unit, we're talking about a family. Or we're talking about a senior. We're talking about someone who's disabled. A worker, a teacher, a firefighter, you know. So that's why we're trying to use density bonus, not in an outrageous way that I'm sure your community would have become unglued if we would have said, okay, under the law, we can go eighty percent. So we're going to get an eighty percent and do seventy-two units. But looking at the site, you've got to be reasonable in terms of what can you produce to make a livable community in that particular setting. And in a setting where we're right in, you know, we're not next to a train station, so there's other considerations about getting some parking and... And so I think, I give a lot of credit to Cabrillo in terms of the judicious nature of planning this. You know, it's not like, oh, we've got this cookie jar because of this law. We can do this much. The question is, what's reasonable to do? What will help, but will work? Because we want it to work for the residents just as much as we want it to work for the city and for the developer. It's everybody's together in this, you know. These density bonus units, as with an SB thirty-five rental units, they are deed restricted for fifty-five years. Which is, that's a big deal. You know, we did a project in Oxnard, and it was actually a for-sale project, but it was a hundred percent affordable. This was back in two thousand. They did a deed restriction of twenty years, and everybody thought, wow, twenty years, that's a long time. But, you know, it's like, no, it's not. And we're seeing a lot of those units being converted to market rate now, and kind of everybody's kicking themselves saying, wow. You know, that was a big, great stock of affordable housing, and now it's not. You know? So fifty-five years, I think it's a pretty decent amount of time. I'm sure when we come up against the fifty-five years, we'll be saying, why did we just do fifty-five? I don't know. Because we want to preserve the affordability. But that's what those regulations are for. Besides getting a density bonus for committing to make a certain amount of your units affordable, then there's also the opportunity to have what they call concessions or waivers. And as Mr. Seabird said, you know, because of the amount of affordability we're giving, we have the right to four incentives. And I think he pointed out the two that, you know, that we're doing. But I think the one that's really, everybody struggles with the most is parking. And this is another one where, you know, under the SB thirty-five project, we could have just come in with, we've got fifty units, we could have had fifty parking spaces. That'd totally legal. But again, Cabrillo thinking about, okay, this is a this is a community that's going to be for a certain amount of time. What can we design? You know, we're not by rail or any kind of public transportation. And so they were able to design it in a way to come up with ninety-five parking spaces, which is actually twenty-five more than is required under density bonus law. The one thing that we're asking for, so that we could design it appropriately, was to just cut off that two feet at the end because we needed the access road and everything else. You know, everything has to fit together in a project. And so that's one of the incentives we're asking for, is to have that shortened. You know, the parking stall be a little smaller. And I think it's, we're not asking for anything extraordinary because in a lot of jurisdictions now, that is what the standard is. Standard here is good size. So basically, that's how density bonus law works. We get the opportunity to use it by committing certain amount of units to be affordable over the fifty-five years. And of course, we're committing all of the units to be affordable over the fifty-five years. And of course, under the law, the manager, there is a requirement under California law that there has to be an onsite manager. So you have to have that one for the manager. But it all fits together, and that's all I have to say. I really appreciate it. If anybody has questions after, we'll be around. Thank you.
Lucas, next slide for me, thanks. So my name is Frank Thompson. I'm a housing consultant. I've worked in affordable housing for over forty years, I guess you can tell that. And have done just over two-hundred projects. I lost count, somewhere around a hundred and fifty. But every one of those projects had the same kind of challenges we face tonight. And that is to get the right combination of factors. What is the unit mix? What is the income mix? You know, what about parking, density? How tall is the building? All of those things, I mean, we look at them from a planning standpoint here, but obviously, there's an economic aspect to each one of them. And we try to keep up. The world changes rapidly between costs of labor, costs of materials, costs of land, costs for permits, costs for delays. And I really have quite a bit of experience. I'm happy that Cabrillo gives me quite a bit of latitude to help advise them about the proper mix. And this project is a complicated one. Victoria alluded to it as being a large-family project. Well, of course, it's not all for large families. That's a classification where twenty-five percent or more of the units are three-bedrooms. And then twenty-five percent also have to be two-bedrooms or more. So those are one of the many constraints that are imposed on us about financing. So one of the things that we want to look at here, and I'll get back to the slide, is that there's a tension between the desire of Cabrillo to have the rents be as low as possible versus wanting to provide the highest-quality management. So you saw the picture of Montgomery Oaks. I believe that project has a waiting list today of three-hundred-and-twenty-five families. So to give you an idea, we're not worried about marketing. What we are worried about is long-term maintenance and quality. And I think you can see Cabrillo has demonstrated that they are responsible about keeping their properties up. So to keep the rents at that low level, it is necessary to get governmental subsidies or other incentives. So the density bonus is one of those important incentives here. It's kind of a non-cash incentive. There are other things, low-income housing tax credits, you've heard that before. And then Cabrillo also is seeking direct governmental loans. They're classified as loans, we may actually pay them. But if we're unable to pay them within the low-income rents, those loans will be forgiven by the state of California. So that's important to the financing here and how it works. Some of the other things. Right, just to point out a couple of things that the, working with the state and federal government, we're obviously bringing many millions of dollars back into the Ojai community, which mostly comes to the community through construction labor and those folks having jobs. But it also helps through the management company and all of the vendors that we hire for that high level of maintenance. One of the difficulties about low-income housing is that it takes a team of experienced professionals to be able to pull these off. I mean, sometimes we think amateurs in a nonprofit corporation can all get together and make this happen. It does happen every once in a while, but mostly nowadays, low-income housing is produced by professional organizations like Cabrillo. It's really important, and part of the rating and the competition for the scarce money that's available is based on your track record. So Cabrillo is rated as one of the very top nonprofit development companies and management companies for low-income housing in Southern California. So I'm proud to be working for them. Next slide then. So this is just a recap. I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with the housing difficulties here in Ventura County, which have actually gotten worse. And so that, from time to time, there's organizations that keep track of the average market rents in Ventura County market. And you would have to have basically three-point-one minimum-wage workers in a household to pay the average rent. And that is a very high ratio nationwide. Most parts of the United States are about two times the minimum wage, which stands to reason. Two people working at minimum wage should be able to afford an apartment at thirty percent of their income. But in Ventura County, it's fifty percent higher. So, and then the same source measures. So, and then the same source measures increased rents between 2020 and 2021 of thirteen percent. From 2020 to the present is almost forty percent in some markets. It's really gone up tremendously in some areas. And at the same time, state and federal funding has been reduced. So it's that much more important for us to compete effectively for these monies on behalf of the low-income people in the Ojai area. Your next slide, Lucas. So a couple of different ways to look at this as well. So there's the average asking rent in 2021 was $2,434 of all different types of units, studios through three bedrooms. So this is the average. It would probably be appropriate for about a two-bedroom unit. So based on a thirty percent of income to rent, the slide is telling us that you would need to have a household earning $46 per hour to afford that. Now, that's one worker. Now, plenty of households have two workers and so forth. But just the same, to give you an idea of what we think of as traditional family of one worker, you know, there are people that make $46 an hour, but there are plenty of people who do not. And just as an example, these are the wages. State minimum wage, fifteen dollars. You go all the way from a home healthcare aide, which we depend on, at fifteen dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour, right through retail sales clerks, sixteen ninety. Farm workers, fifteen fifty-seven. Janitors and cleaners, almost eighteen dollars an hour. Medical assistants, twenty dollars. So you can see how far off we are here from making this affordable. Typically, for the low-income level, a household that would earn up, a single-worker household that would earn up to twenty-seven dollars an hour would be classified as low-income. So we have a wide range of people that we're planning on marketing to here in Ojai, in the Ojai Valley. Anyways, I'll be available for questions later on economic feasibility. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Doctorman, and I work with the Cabrillo Economic Development Team. I'm more of their land use planner, so I'm going to ask for the next slide. And I'm just going to walk you through the property. It sounded like you've all made a site visit, so this is not an unfamiliar area to you. I'll just tell you a little bit about the process of how we came to know about this property. And you think, "Well, yeah, it's got an affordable housing overlay." Of course, you found out about it. But no, it was much more organically than that. It was Frank Thompson often is out on foot and bike and car, looking around. And he calls me on a Sunday and says, "Hey, I got a spot up in Ojai." And it's vacant, which is prime, because demolition is expensive and messy and takes time. And so I said, "Tell me about the site." "Well, it's in, I think, in an industrial area." "Oof, I'm not that interested." "How big is it?" "Well, it's two acres." "Oh, okay, two acres." "Well, what's around it?" "Mini storage on two sides." "Well, that's everybody's favorite neighbor. It's very quiet, it's very clean." And then we have affordable housing to the west on one side, existing multifamily affordable housing. "Okay, so let's go." So then we dig into the zoning on it, and we find out, in fact, it has this affordable housing overlay, which is very exciting to us. And we drill down on it, and we look at the neighborhood. We're a little concerned about the U-Haul rental operation north of us, because there's underground storage tanks which contain petroleum. And sure enough, we did a quick look online, and we're able to find out that there was a leaking underground storage tank or two, but they had been remediated. The site had been given a clean bill of health. And went ahead and did an environmental site assessment, a professional one. They recommended, "Go ahead, do some drilling, why not?" Things move, you know, petroleum products travel. Maybe this site is clean, but maybe your site isn't. So we went throughout mythology, methodology throughout the site and did individual samples. And it came up clean, clean, but it was recommended that we have a barrier under the units so that any potential traveling of residual materials from the other property in the future wouldn't create any kind of airborne problem. Besides that, we got a clean bill of health. So then we moved on. We had biology study down the trees. There are mainly eucalyptus in the southwest, southeast corner. We had an oak tree there at the end of the stem, which was found to be on the opposite property. And no critters or plants that would be of concern to anyone. So we then did a traffic study and said, "Hey, well, what about traffic on the Ojai Avenue up the street?" And, well, before that, before that, we looked at the affordable housing overlay, and it said, "Hey, why don't you try and take access off of Whispering Oaks, which is the bulb turnaround to the east of our property?" And we met with the area housing authority, talked to them about it, and they said, "No." We have too many people that park. You don't see them there now, but apparently it's turned, well, yeah, you can see some parallel parking on that access drive, and they're having problems with clipped, and they call them wingers in England. What do we call them? Rearview mirrors. And they just wouldn't be willing to do that. So we understood, and we moved on. And so because the way of the wording of the SPL overlay is that you shall, should take access, instead of shall, we had to just move on from that. And we looked at Bryant Street and directed our traffic engineer to study Bryant Street and its intersection to the north. Also came up that there were any thresholds of critical matter that would be crossed with the addition of our traffic. And so we kept going. And at that point, we looked at site plans. We had several meetings with the community development director and staff, trying to make it work. And eventually, it was just the fire traffic access that makes the hundred, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree turn that you see in our plans. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so here's what you see. This shot is looking due east, and this shot is looking southeast over at the mini-storage wall there at the end of the slide. Next slide. You can see it's a vacant property. And this slide is with the existing, except for if you've been out there recently, you know that the buildings and cars and everything that was on the Adamson Towing site has been removed. But if you go to the next slide, you can see how the architect envisions this with the digital aid of the Revit program, where this isn't a guess. This is actually taking what is there and digitizing it, and then putting our building on the property back there. And from this spot at the entrance to the driveway across the street, you cannot see even the three stories. And this will show you what we're planning for the walkway out to the street and the parallel parking behind it, you can see on the left side of the screen, along with the trees that are already there and trees that are proposed, that are required actually by the zoning ordinance. Okay, and next slide. Okay, so this project, this picture is looking north on Bryant Street. And what we see there now, there's a little coffee place up the street with umbrellas. But this is the general look. You've got your overhead wires. Now, if you go to the next slide, this is what you would see from about that spot on, across the street of the property. So you've got a full fence there. You see our wall behind that, and further from that, you see a part of the mini-storage right there at the end, and then our project. It's not that you can't see it, it's not completely...
The tall building there is your project?
Mm-hmm. You see the second story closest to us, and then elevating to a third story. And then next slide. You are now at Whispering Oaks in the area where we actually see a lot of parallel parking. We don't have that digitized onto our plan, but that's our buildings. So you see this two-story, rightmost elevation, moving up to the three stories. Three stories in the back building. Then you move down to two stories. You can see stair steps. You can't see our first story. It's lower than the existing structures on the Whispering Oaks property. We also have an elevator, I mean, a stairwell shaft that we thought perhaps a local artist might want to use their skills and decorate. If not, we would put windows in it and move on. But that's the idea, is that hopefully some motivated artists will want to decorate a portion of our building. Next slide. This is what a drone allowed us to see from the second story of the northmost building. Our architect will be up here in a while, and he'll be able to identify which building and where you're standing to get this view. But, you know, part of it is glorious. You've got the mountains, and the other part is just the business of life. Yeah. And then the next slide. Okay, so the first thing we know when we come in with a use and we go to a planning department is they're going to look at what else could be there, particularly looking for things that the community might be interested in. And are we taking away a piece of land that was kind of earmarked for something else in the community? We went through the uses in the M1 zone, and we didn't see anything that looked like, that we knew Ojai was hoping to see there. But we did see a lot of uses that, you know, are more impactful than a housing development. And these are the ones up there on the top that are allowed outright. And the ones below, you would need a discretionary permit, a conditional use permit. Okay, and I believe that's it. Is there one more? I thought we had one more. Hmm, well, it's not there, so I'll hand it back over to Victoria. Thank you.
So we're going to get to the design really briefly. I just wanted to cover a couple of more items regarding Cabrillo and the project. As Frank mentioned earlier, the income limits for these projects and who could really truly live there. So for a fifty percent AMI unit, for a one-bedroom unit, somebody would need to be earning forty-six thousand five hundred a year to be able to live in a one-bedroom unit. So as an example, seniors earning thirty-eight hundred dollars a month would qualify to live in that unit. Next slide. Some onsite amenities for this property that we would be proposing. Of course, an onsite manager, meeting room, community space with kitchen, laundry facility for all the residents, elevator access. We always, we're planning, and you'll hear from our landscape architects in a little while, you know, drought-tolerant landscaping, always looking to save water where possible, including state-of-the-art efficiency plumbing. We'll have some residential community gardens onsite, the ninety-five parking spaces previously mentioned. We're also proposing to have bicycle parking onsite. The community will be gated, and also we'll have all-electric and solar power. We'll have a play, we'll have two play areas, one for toddlers and one for older children. Next slide. So local amenities that I'm sure you're all familiar with in the city of Ojai. Obviously, there's schools in the neighborhood that we do feel that the community's children that come to this site would benefit from. Medical facilities in the community, transportation, library, which is only point eight miles away from this property. Next slide. Financial institutions, four parks in the area, all within walking distance of the property, grocery stores and the pharmacy. So this community does have very rich uses and utilities for the people living in the community. Next slide. Just to talk a little bit about Cabrillo's resident services. So we provide resident community services at all of our properties. If you can go on the next slide. Part of these services at this property, we would include homework clubs, summer programs for the children, education, recreation, a mobile library. We also provide food share at several of our properties throughout Ventura County, where we have our team bring the food onsite and distribute to the residents. Next slide. And then, as mentioned, our property management team, they do manage all of our properties. We don't outsource our property management. So we would have an onsite manager, a maintenance tech dedicated to the property. And I work closely with that team from an asset management perspective to make sure that our properties are maintained. As Frank mentioned earlier, when you get funding from the state, you are required to keep your standards very high. You actually receive negative points for any future funding if you don't. So we are checked annually. We have inspections annually by both the state and any other local funding. Next slide. And that's it. So I'm going to pass it over to our architect from RJC.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pablo Romero, and I represent the architecture firm. Next slide, please. So we've been already looking into, you know, the qualities of the property, the site. I'm going to talk a little bit about the challenges that we went through also in addressing this. We, you know, what you're seeing right now is probably the tenth iteration of, you know, the multiple approaches that we had, you know, beginning from a potential connection, as Mary described, to the adjoining property to the east. How do we solve fire apparatus access and what have you? So all of these were challenges that we had to address. A flag property, a flagship property, like the one we have is, you know, has some challenges, particularly you have one access point, right? So that limits somehow what you can do there. However, you know, after exploring, just going from two stories, what can we approach? What's the maximum use that we can use? That's when we actually determined that it was going to be necessary to take one of those, you know, opportunities to go into the third story. And we came up with a very cohesive project. Basically, this is developed in two buildings, what we call, you know, easily the north building, which is a shorter building that varies from two to three stories. And then the south building, which is the longer one, that goes step down from three stories all the way to one at the east edge. Slide, please. Part of the exercise that we did, of course, was the impact, the solar impact, or the shade impact that our property, our buildings would, you know, create on the adjoining properties. The fact that we're, you know, close to the south and, you know, not close to the northern property, that really allowed us to avoid creating big shades on those properties. Similarly, the stepping down of the property towards the east side allowed us to prevent long shades along Whispering Oaks as well. This is one of the slides. Of course, the completes of metal has, you know, multiple studies throughout the hours of the day. The slide, please. Our south elevation, this is our south north building, the short one. And this is the south elevation. In this case, the eastern, the western part, the left part, accommodates on the lower level the community services. So everything's congregated there. We'll have the community room, laundry services, offices to provide support to the community. All of those are concentrated along the western edge, which is also adjoining the small green space that we have and that we'll see shortly with landscape architects. Above that, community services is the, what we're recommending for the manager's unit and the three-story block along the east side. That's all multiple one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. All of these, I may say, it's based on modular, it's based on a modular design. We're thinking about doing this prefabricated, which means that we're restricted to go with a specific module. All of these are twelve-feet-wide modules, twelve feet by different lengths, depending on what we're approaching here. But all of this is going to be done by twelve-feet modules. Next slide, please.
So like row houses back east?
On steroids. The concept of pre-manufacturing, yes, it's the same. However, it is, you will not see this as a pre-manufact, it's not going to have the feel or the, you know, of how a typical pre-manufactured house will be red, right? This is the west elevation. This is the one facing our green space. Again, the bottom part, bottom part... Again, the bottom part, bottom part, that's all the community services. This is where the two double doors on the left, those two open wide, that's the community room. We have a, you know, a community kitchen as well, restrooms and a laundry. Above that, the second story, that's the manager's unit and behind that, the three-story block, that's, that's, those are the, the units themselves. Next slide, please. This is the eastern elevation. We don't, you know, this is, this is the area where Mary was just mentioning, the hatched one. That's where we're proposing that maybe some local artist, you know, takes over that one and we can create some interesting mural, mural that goes with, I don't know, with a bucolic theme of Ojai or something along those lines. But that's, that's, we're basically creating the space for something like that to take place. Next slide, please. This is, of course, the south building. This is a, you know, way longer building, but it goes with the same theme. This is all going with a modern farmhouse architectural style. And we'll see, you know, the textures and the colors, we're selecting a very warm palette. But it's, you know, basically repeating the modules. We have some, the taller elements are the access points to the, to the buildings and so forth. Next slide, please. This is the floor plan for the south building. On the bottom, we see the lower level. That's the first floor, ground floor. We have on the west side, that's on the left of the, of the view, those are the three-bedroom units. The three-bedroom units are only, only exist in this long building on that wing. And then we have a series of two-bedroom units on, exactly on those central blocks. And two-bedroom and one-bedroom at the end. The second story repeats itself, but it's beginning to cut down towards the east to create that step-down effect towards Whispering Oaks. So that shaded area, it's, it's the roof to the ground floor. So we only have at the end a one-bedroom unit and then it stops, right? And slide please. And the third story, we step it down once again to create, to leave just the three-bedroom units, two three-bedroom units and a total of eight two-bedroom units, the third floor. Above is just the general roof plan. As you see, we have preparation on the roof to receive photovoltaic panels to provide a, you know, net zero building. Next slide, please. This is, as we are coming into the, you know, through the access point, through the flag, this is the first image that we get. This is the, the north building. As you see, this is the community area with the garden, with the playground. All of this is taking place as the initial image that receives the, the user. Towards the right side in the background, we see the south building. Next slide, please. Again, is the north building seen from, you know, from a southern point of view. We see again the two-story element along the central portion of the image and then it steps up to three-story. That's where the apartments take place. Next slide, please. And, well, this is, of course, now we reach the three-story. This central portion, it's, you know, the changing tones. As I said, it's an earth tone palette with just the contrast of the, of this bluish hue that basically accentuates the access points to the building. Next slide, please. This is the view of the same north building, but on the north side. Again, we see, this is the, that's, that stairwell leads up to the manager's unit above, which is, you know, strategically located in the central part of the complex to have, you know, a, a good view of most, if not all of the, of the property, you know, to serve as also a little bit of a monitor of what's going on and, you know, take the temperature of the community if you want. Underneath, it's the community center. Next slide, please. And the, this is the south building, I'm sorry, yes, the south building. Again, we're, you know, continuing with the same, same theme. As you can see, all of the units are provided with balconies. We, of course, in addition of, of this green space, that's more of a community area, a gathering space, we are providing, you know, individual balcony spaces for each unit. Each unit will receive a minimum of one balcony to have, you know, your chairs outside and, you know, enjoy the sunset or what have you, whatever you enjoy. Next slide, please. Accessible parking for our specific public is, is very important. We are exceeding the minimum requirements from, from ADA by, by 150%. So, you know, we, we have plenty of accessible parking stalls here. Next slide, please. Here we see the detail of the easternmost part of that same south building as it starts stepping down from three to two to one stories as it reaches the eastern property line, the one that joins Whispering Oaks. Next slide, please. And this is the view, we, Mary had already discussed how, you know, this is seen from Whispering Oaks. It is important to say, to mention also that because of the existing, the condition of the existing soils and, and of the storm water management, we have, and also, you know, also to, to reduce the impact on, on the adjoining properties, we have decided to set our starting point seven feet under this adjoining property. So our grade, our elevation inside a property here at the other side of the fence that we're seeing right now, seven feet below the, the grade here at Whispering Oaks. So we're going to recreate a retention wall, but that's going to, that, that's trying to help alleviate the impact also on, on the adjoining property. So you don't see too much of that three building that we understand might be sensitive to, to the community. So those seven feet should help, you know, bring the building down a little bit. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, all, you know, the building will be pre-manufactured. This means, means the whole framing of the building, all the interiors of the units, all of that will come to the site completely finished. However, the exterior envelope of the building will not. That will have to be site-built. All the, the skin, if you want, of the building, right? All the wall finish, all the exterior wall finishes, all the roofing will be done onsite. So we have selected James Hardy boards, you know, to, to create the finishes. And all of this is really fast to, to install once onsite. We're also trying to, you know, gain in terms of, of speed here. It's important that we, you know, move fast. The pre-manufacturing helps a lot. The fact that we're also using pre-manufactured finishes, that's going to help out a lot. So these are, this is our color board. Most of it, as I mentioned, is just panel boards, concrete panel boards and shingles for the roofing. And all the patios are going to be treated in composite wood. All the lighting is being proposed as dark sky compliant, so we have a whole study that's going to be included in the, in the full submittal. But we've already addressed the, the lighting requirements and again, everything is dark sky compliant. Next slide, please. Doors, window, finishes, stucco, all of this is, you know, submitted here and it's part of the, you know, part of the presentation. But you've seen how it looks altogether. This is just the description of breaking down all the, all the elements. And with this site, transferred to landscape.
Good evening. My name is Jack Kiesel. Kiesel's Islander Landscape Architecture Firm, right down the road. This is my associate Benjamin. He, he'll be here with me to speak about the landscaping, if you guys have questions about that. Start right in with it on our approach to the landscape. Japanese gardens are off that idea of borrowed scenery, bringing from the greater region and bringing that into the garden. While we don't have a lot, a lot of large areas in, in this particular project, we wanted to make the most of the spaces that were given to us. And so we want to bring native plants, things like oaks and, and other kind of sages and those type of things that you see around Ojai. But we don't have just native plants. We also have some edible plants like citrus trees, which you are, are also part of, very much part of the community, also olives too, where maybe a native tree or a fruit-bearing tree is, is not appropriate. So, and then again, all these plant materials would be very drought tolerant or even extremely drought tolerant, that the idea being that after time, after so many years, you could, you could almost get away without any irrigation, except perhaps for those trees that are the ornamental fruit-bearing varieties. I might bring your attention to that main little area. That's kind of the, the largest space, as you can see here on the plan, and that's where we really tried to bring in some activities for the, the tenants here. We have a kind of toddler area that's going to be enclosed. That's where it says number three. And then we also have a play structure for kids from the five to seven age. And around that, we have like a little protective wall that would be like an earthen color, could be a board form concrete or it could be like a, a natural toned stucco. And then connecting to the other side on the upper part of the plan, it's like a curved wall. That would also be for, it's like a low seat wall for people to use. We also have like a low drought tolerant like ground cover for the, the kids in the community to sit on if they wanted to. We also have some picnic tables of, that could be used. There's going to be a community center, so that's going to be kind of like the one active area for, for the tenants here. And then around the foundations, again, just your low water stuff. We also, speaking of that idea of bringing the, the greater kind of context into the site, we were going to introduce some boulders here and there. That'd be like sandstone boulders. And then on the corner there, we have a little area for, for the pets to go. You always want to have that. And then some of the trees where, especially on the upper side, we wanted to keep those kind of open. We chose olives for that because that's where the views are and you saw, you saw that in the earlier slides. I think that's very important that we maintain the views. And then I think we can go into the next slide. And then here, you can just kind of again see the, the kind of native plant type materials that we'd be introducing to the site. Some are natives, many are also what you would find here locally in the region. And again, a, a few of the ornamental varieties, mostly fruit-bearing. Next slide. And then here's our irrigation plan and, you know, this irrigation would be, again, state of the art, complying with all the current state standards. This would be all inline drip, which you're pretty much required to do. And I think that, that's the end of our presentation. And if you guys have any additional questions about irrigation, my associate is here for that, for that.
Thank you. If I may just add on, just like on the irrigation, this, given that we're using natives and very low water usage, we are in compliance with the California Title 24, the Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. So we have a roughly like a preliminary calculation of our annual usage of our Mawa. So we're, we're about 30,000 gallons a year under the maximum allowed. And as Jack mentioned, we, we are proposing to do an inline drip system that, you know, it benefits more because it waters directly to the root of the, the plant material with not, without using excessive amounts of water. It also will be controlled by an, and smart controller, weather sense irrigation controller, meaning it will be based off the weather and it's not going to be, you know, irrigating while we have rain or the climate is uncalled for. So that, that also, all that combined will, you know, save extreme amounts of water for the landscape. Also, as Jack mentioned, this is probably more so at the beginning of the, the installing period and once these plants, these natives are well-established, you know, they will just require less, less. So they're very low in water and also maintenance. So they'll be pretty self-sustained once they're, they're well-established over time.
So that's a wrap. That concludes the presentations by both staff and the applicant. And now is the time for questions.
As you might guess, there are probably several questions here.
Yeah, so let's start with the questions like we typically do.
And if the, the COO from the applicant could be here, you can call on whoever's appropriate to answer a particular question. Judy, would you like to start?
I haven't heard anything yet about the storm water runoff. Can you address that?
Yes. Let me find somebody for that.
Frank, did you want to speak to the storm water or Mary?
We just received an update on that yesterday, so they'll, they'll be able to come on in
Well, Mr. Seibert got that this morning, an email from our civil engineer that says that he's come to a conclusion. And if you'd like me to read into the record what he says, I'm happy to do that or I could But basically, we have a technical, technically infeasible site, which means that the soils are so clayish and so impermeable that for us to meet the regional water quality control board standards of letting our water, our storm water that accumulates on the property and that we create barriers to keep our water on the property as we're required to do, it would take past a certain, a threshold level of time for it to permeate. So we have to treat it another way and we created underground chambers to run the water through. We've done that on other properties. This, this property is too, too dense to even do that. So we sort of get an exception when you're considered technically infeasible. But we went through some back and forth with our regional water quality control board, MS4 permit. And apparently we've come to a mutually agreed upon way of harvesting the rainwater system to satisfy the retention requirements as outlined in the Ventura County Technical Guidelines Manual, which is what we, you, Ojai, use the same as Ventura County to meet regional water quality control board standards.
You said mutually agreeable. Who's, who's agreeing?
Apparently our civil engineer and the regional water, the Ventura County...
LA Regional Quality Control Board?
Ventura County Flood Control Management and Clean, Clean Water Control. So I'm sorry, we don't have our civil engineer here, but...
Is this, is the civil engineer?
Give us 25 words in, in what's going on underground with your solution?
It's, rainwater harvesting isn't so much underground as is above-ground, right Frank? We'll have a cistern. And we're going to take this?
My understanding, I mean, from the correspondence, Frank Gopson, from the correspondence, I've seen that the city's consulting engineer, is that the correct word for, or at least your engineering consultant?
Our, yeah, our MS4 expert.
Okay, an expert. Has reached a conclusion with our engineer that we would pre-treat the water, all the storm water that we gather and then put it in underground chamber, which would then be used over a period of time for irrigation on the site and would avoid any runoff into the natural water courses.
When you say chamber, are you talking like a cistern?
Yeah, I believe it's under some of the parking areas. Yeah, I believe it's under some of the parking areas. Yeah.
Okay, because you have, the ground slopes to the west and it slopes to the south.
We're getting rid of the slope, I think. Right, we're going to change the grade of the site.
If you're grading it all out, then that's a different problem. But the water that falls, even if it's level ground there
Sure.
is going to collect more or less to the west and the south where I think where you have the block wall barrier that forms the edge of the self-storage property.
Right, that's true.
And so you're going to have drains here and there and an underground cistern that buffers the flow of storm water until you can irrigate with it.
That's correct, that's correct. So that the natural flow of the water
Trying to understand.
Mostly on the surface, some goes into drainage subsurface, goes to a pre-treatment facility, I mean, pre-treatment chambers, and then it'll go to the cistern below the parking, I believe is where...
They're going to have a pump assembly to draw upon the water for use in the subsurface drip. Excess water will overflow from the system to a detention system for hydraulic purposes.
Right, so the intention is to be within standards for storm water runoff, which would, the storm water runoff is down that 42-foot flag now. That's where it goes now. It flows very, very slowly. It's almost dead flat
Yeah, there's not a whole lot.
Out to Bryant Street. But there should be a noticeable reduction in storm water runoff to Bryant Street after this system's installed, because the only part of it that'll run to Bryant Street is the water that fails to percolate on that little tail. And that amount of water, I believe, is below standard for running off the property.
You talked about pre-treatment. What are you talking, are you talking chemical pre-treatment of storm water?
Filtering, filtering for
Filtering, okay.
Yeah, you know, bird
Particulate filtering.
Yeah, bird particulates and, you know, things that get into up on the roof that gets washed down when the rain comes and things that get washed out the parking lot when the rain comes.
Is there a certain, is there a number of gallons to these containers? Like how much water do they sport?
It's in that email. It's a very large amount of water, yeah. Several swimming pools full.
And the main concern, just for my own edification, is to make sure that those units don't flood when we have a big storm. So the water doesn't just sit there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. The site is actually, to my eye, it seemed pretty flat when I first saw it. But we got the topography map, it's steeper than you might think.
A lot more grading than you might think.
Well, there is, there is that, yeah. No, there's quite a bit of export from the site. That's absolutely right. Yeah. But anyways, it will become basically a large plane that will tip more toward the flag entry than the back corner that you're aware of. It tips to the back corner now, but if you're out there, you probably saw that small concrete swale that's been installed on this property. Yeah, that swell has to be removed. But yeah, so it'll tip toward where the vehicular access is.
And then you've got a seven-foot elevation back to the level of the driveway of Whispering Oaks?
Oh, yeah. So from the lowest point where the driveway is to the point on Whispering Oaks, I don't know for sure, but it is probably 16 or 17 feet. Over two acres, so you have plenty of room to get there.
Oh, I got you.
And then you'll have a seven-foot retaining wall at the end of that slope. Yeah. Yeah, it turns out to be, nowhere is it flat. I mean, flat's not a problem for us. It's almost the other way because we don't want the slope closing the car doors accidentally and causing a problem for cross-slope for the handicap. Yeah, it's surprisingly steep out there.
Do you know the grade that it goes down, like what the percentage might be?
Yeah, I believe the paved areas are all at a between a one and a half and two percent slope for the water to runoff.
That's acceptable. Sorry to butt in. Do you have more?
That's okay.
It's been a complication, yes.
You said that this was acceptable to the Ventura County Flood Control Agency and to your civil engineers or to the Charles Abbott Associates?
That's your expert?
Yeah, so our expert is Charles Abbott and Associates, yes. And they are
And she has agreed to the cistern concept?
Yes, yes. Didn't agree to the initial assessments that they had provided, which is provided in the packet, but it sounds like we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
And apologies, this just came about last night, so it's very fresh.
I knew this was
We wanted to make sure we had it pretty.
Next question. Did the, in the tribal question get resolved? Is that, do we have information from them saying?
That's a question for me, not a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we as a city are
We'll go back and forth here as necessary.
Have an obligation and requirement per the law and regulations, per state law, to provide notification to tribe, both to the state and to our local tribe. We have done that. We have done that on two separate occasions, once in July and then again in September. And we have not heard back on either account. There is only a 30-day requirement and window in which for us to hear back from the group on, and we haven't heard back from them on anything yet.
Okay, so you are clear.
It's been radio silence at this point, but we are meeting the state statute and requirements.
So is there a PAA in the future here, or is there none?
The PAA is what we're doing right now, which is reaching out to them, identifying. We've already done the architectural or archaeological assessment. So that has, the pause already been done and addressed.
That, if they wound up uncovering relics or bones or whatever, that would stop the project?
There's a standard condition that we have that does do that, to assess the situation and then move on.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not any different than any other project.
Right.
Go ahead, and I'll think of some more.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Please, go ahead, Judy.
Sort of been answered, but I want to press it on it. And that is, entering off of the manufacturing commercial zone that Bryant represents as opposed to, it's got a common wall with Whispering Oaks, the development. And it would seem to me that if I were a resident, I would want to be coming in from a residential neighborhood as opposed to coming in from where our industry is and where our cannabis is. And so I was just wondering, is there anything we can do about that?
That's a question for me as well. So therein lies the question. It's an access piece. And in our code, as the applicant had identified, it is a should access point along Whispering Oaks versus a shall. The should is not necessarily controlling piece. They've done their due diligence in terms of reaching out to area housing authority and trying to negotiate an opportunity to take access off of the Whispering Oaks side, which is the eastern side of the property. They're just not willing to come to the table for the obvious.
It's a county agency that runs that.
It's a, yeah, it's the county agency that's managed, operated. They're just not interested in sharing access.
It's a private road.
So, and it is a private, it's true, it is a private road, thank you. So they have no obligation or requirement to provide that access, but they certainly did their due diligence, which is required through our code. The should versus the shall.
Okay. John?
Yeah, just a question on the traffic, traffic study you guys did. You guys went through the Ventura County Transportation Commission?
No, we had a private consultant, I believe.
Yeah, okay. And did they, did they work?
You went through the Ventura County Transportation Commission?
No, no, who did you, yeah, did you go through them? Did you go through Ventura County Transportation Commission? It's looked like who you went through. That's who, that's what it says in our report, the traffic report provided by ATE identifies.
Oh, right, they're a private.
Ventura County Transportation Commission traffic model.
Yeah, they use the models that are set for the entire county.
Right, I guess my question is, did you go through, did they discuss it with Public Works as well? Because I think Public Works has a traffic threshold that they recommend for Highway 33.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, right.
Okay, did they, did they look at the impacts of Highway 33 during peak hours? Like Casita Springs, Oakview?
Were you not given a copy of that report? We can get that for you.
I have it.
It's modeled
Yeah, I have it, but
For miles around.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't indicate like Casita Springs and coming out of the Ojai Valley. It's just for downtown.
Yeah, that might be beyond what the model requires to have scope. That's quite a bit away from the property.
Yeah, okay. The only reason I ask is I know that they have restrictions on how much traffic that area can handle. It's already nearing capacity.
But you may be reducing traffic because you're going to have people living here no longer driving on 33.
Potentially, we don't know. We know that there's a lot of jobs outside of town and a lot of folks commute out of town.
But it would be very difficult to assess.
It would be, yeah, I agree.
It sounds like we're deliberating here. Let's just be careful with questions now and then deliberation.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious. And then also, you mentioned Cabrillo is 20 units and there's about 100 people living?
On the waiting list?
No, no, they're living there now, at Cabrillo.
Oh, at Montgomery.
At Montgomery, because I apologize.
So Montgomery is a 21-unit property. It's a family property. So a number of people currently living there. It's a little under 100. I would say you're looking at more at 80 to 90.
Okay, and how many people do you project for this particular?
Based on the, go ahead.
Yeah, we're just doing the two
249.
249.
249.
If you have every back bedroom maxed out with the state's maximum, which is two people per bedroom and a person on the couch. And you don't see that on it all the time either, and that's why you don't get the numbers that...
But that is what the state allows, it's two plus one.
Two plus one. Okay, so about 250 people. Okay. And then you also mentioned that there is a waiting list at the current property.
At Montgomery Oaks, correct.
Yeah, but that waiting list is not just for Ojai, right?
The waiting list, no, we don't restrict by area. I mean, we could definitely get that information of where the current waiting list kind of derives from, but it could be from anywhere.
And in this proposal, would it be, it wouldn't be limited to just residents of Ojai?
No, we cannot. It's against fair housing.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, though, that that list is for Montgomery Oaks.
Correct.
Yeah, so not for all of the housing authority property, Cabrillo economic development.
No, I get, I understand. But yeah, that list is not just people that live in Ojai, that's
Not necessarily, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And in the future, this project will not just be for the people of Ojai, it'll be beyond that as well.
Correct. Typically, when we do our marketing, we start locally and then branch out, so.
Right. And I think you mentioned that you probably won't have to do a whole lot of marketing.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Can I come back?
We'll have a second round as needed.
Oh, another, I apologize, another quick question. In one of your slides, it mentioned that farm workers, I think they earn what, $2,0698 per month? Is that right, fair?
I think it was 15 and some change an hour, right?
Right, right. And then, and then in the proposal, we have very low income, right? And I believe that for a family of four, that'd be like $66,000, which is a little bit more than the $2,0698.
Right, and also, 100% of this property is not currently slated as farm worker. It's currently half farm worker, half
19.
General population.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, is there some that are specifically for farm workers in that, in that category of the $2,698 per month?
We do have a unit mix. I don't, yeah, I don't believe we have it with us, but we do have a unit mix for the farm worker units as well, at both 30% and 50% AMIs. So across our portfolio, we have 11 farm worker properties, and within that, we do see people at all of those income levels. It just depends on the programs that are at the properties as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. And this one in particular wouldn't restrict documentation, whether or not you're documented in the United States.
Oh, so you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to say that you're a farm worker?
No, you have to, you have to prove farm worker status. You don't have to prove, provide residence status, citizenship status.
Oh, got you, okay, okay.
But we do see all of those levels at all of our properties. And we don't ever have a problem renting.
And the farm workers that you do have, primarily where are their, are their jobs focused in the area where those buildings are?
For the most part, yes. I mean, throughout Ventura County, obviously, the farms are both Santa Paula, Ventura, Oxnard, primarily, some in Camarillo, some in unincorporated Ventura County as well. So we see it kind of a mix.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My turn? All right. You mentioned a one-story unit. I sort of assumed that would be the property manager. Is that just an exclusive one-story unit out of your 49?
No, it's a step-down approach to limit the impact to the neighbors. So that particular building steps down and borders Whispering Oaks, which is the senior community on the backside of that wall. So it was a step-down approach to not inhibit and have a big three-story building right up against their units.
You mentioned, or you, I say you, one of you mentioned elevators. I didn't see any on the plans. I saw lots of stairwells. Are there?
To where?
And if you're talking senior citizens
Yeah.
then third-floor apartments are going to be tough.
Right, that's right. Yeah, so the, there is an elevator, I mean, it might be hard to find in the plan, but on the north, not the north building, the south building, the long, tall one, and that building has 35 units. The north building has 15 units. So in the building with 35 units, its elevator served on each floor.
Really?
So the, if you look carefully at the elevation, you can see that the building is actually in three segments and drops down two feet in each one of those segments, which again responds to the grading as we were talking about. And that the corridors inside the building are long enough that we can have a handicap compliant ramp in the corridor so that you only need one elevator.
Small enough slope.
Small enough slope that you can roll a wheelchair up it without feeling the effect of gravity on you, yeah.
Okay, okay. You mentioned, or someone did, 12-foot wide modules.
Yeah.
And I said something about row houses
Yeah.
because I had family living in row houses on the East Coast.
Got it.
But some of these apartments are two or three modules wide, I guess.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so no bedroom is less than 12 feet wide.
Yeah.
12 feet wide is pretty generous. There are plenty of bedrooms in the community that are nine and a half and 10 feet. This is 12 feet. But also, the living room is 12 feet as a consequence of being able to mix and match across, you know, it's kind of a meter if you think of it that way.
Yeah. There was mention of it being a gated community.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see any gates on any of the illustrations.
Yeah, I don't think we drew them in. But obviously, in terms of nighttime security, if that ever became an issue, because of the flag lot, it's easy to provide restricted access.
So you'd put a gate at one, one end or the other of that narrow strip?
We actually wouldn't do that.
And all the, all the residents would have some
Access controls. That's correct.
Remote control for the gate.
That's correct. We could do that. It's not drawn in, but it's easy enough to do, and you would actually need two gates. So we're not going to close the access road, the 42-foot, because then like a visitor comes in, there's nowhere for them to go, they have to back up. We're not doing that. But it would close access on the northern side, and then there would be a separate rolling gate on, by, near the community center. So there has to be room for delivery vehicles to park.
First responders are going to have to have remotes?
Responders would have, yeah, I think you already have that. Those are usually called NOx keys, but there's also electronic version of NOx keys now.
Okay.
So that for all of your responders could open the gates, if there were any gates. Right now, there aren't any. We're just saying it's possible to gate it in the future.
Okay. There was mention of having drilled on the Adamson property to see what the underground looked like?
Immediately adjacent to the Adamson property. So we were like
On your property?
Right, two feet inside our property, all along the 42-foot tail and up on that north property line, we had a regular series of spaced borings that went down different depths. I think the deepest one was 20 feet. We're looking for groundwater.
Interesting.
Yeah, we're trying to find out if there was any petroleum in the zone where groundwater had come up and down. But it turns out the groundwater is much deeper in that area, and we didn't find a groundwater line.
And you didn't hit any clay either? You didn't hit any hardpan layers either, evidently?
Not hardpan. What we are hoping to find, frankly, would be gravel or sand.
Sure.
That was unconsolidated, but we did not find it.
That's drainage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was unfortunate.
I have another question.
Just one more for Lucas this time around. I saw, I saw the illustration of a mural or potential mural. Is there a public art requirement here? I thought that was just for commercial property.
No, there, the public art requirement would be an evaluation at the time that it it comes in for plan check. So we do an evaluation on the perceived valuation for the construction. And so if it's over three-hundred thousand, which I assume it will be with a project of this size, then there would be public art that would be provided, yes.
So public art requirement applies to residential development as well as...
Multi-family. This is multi-family, not single-family. Single-family is exempt.
Okay. That's all I have for this round. John?
Yeah, I apologize. So another question. On attachment B that you provided during your traffic study, page thirty-one, it says that average daily traffic trips will be three-hundred-and-twenty-six. And, and it says that eighty-five percent of those will turn left off of Bryant Street.
Yep.
So I guess my question is, when you approach Bryant Street today and you turn left, it's very difficult because Ojai Avenue gets really busy, especially on weekends.
Right.
So I could see that Bryant Street back up quite a bit. So has there been talk about putting a signal there or something to control traffic?
I mean, we did meet with, we've walked up and down several times, that street, to meet with the neighbors, and that was probably the number-one suggestion or comment that was made in that area about the difficulty of turning left against traffic. The people that live in that area or work in that area are pretty astute, and they, they feel like changing the timing on the existing stoplight, which is two blocks to the west, would be more likely to happen than putting in a new stoplight.
That's at Fox Street?
Yep.
Two blocks?
Montgomery.
Montgomery?
Right, Montgomery, yeah. You can tell I'm not local.
Yeah, I don't think there's this...
It's Montgomery Street is where the...
Fox, Fox is east of Montgomery, yeah.
Way down, that's on Fox.
Well, but that's, that's how the breaks in traffic are generated from that stoplight, then creates a break, and then other people enter the roadway.
Yeah.
And then you have to wait your turn for those people to clear out against people traveling west in the other lane.
Right.
So, yeah, it, it's, we recognize it's difficult.
Yeah. And then another question. I know that in our, in our code, we mentioned that it's nice, you want to have two access points, one for emergency purposes, and then the other for primary access. So I know we only have one access point. So if there is an emergency and everybody floods through that one access point, are you concerned that traffic's going to back up and people won't be able to get out of that flag route?
Yes, and we have access with Condor Storage next door. I don't know that we showed it, but they have access to that flag. And we were thinking about working with them to see if we could get reciprocal access for emergencies, for people to leave through Condor Storage, to the extent that would help.
Right.
It may not help because everybody in that whole area is going to be trying to get to this intersection at Bryant. But you would, I mean, in most cases, I don't know what exactly the emergency would be. I mean, I guess we can all imagine wildfire is probably...
We had one.
No, I understand.
We had one five years ago.
I, I, I realize that, yeah. So it's probably wildfire is what we're most concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, just to give you an idea, we're surrounded by high, high severity fire, all the, all the mountains. So we live in kind of a donut. So in, in Ojai, pretty proper, it's not high severity fire, except all surrounding it is.
Yep.
So we're, once the fire gets started, it'll circle the whole valley. And that's what happened five years ago.
Yep.
And it was very difficult to get out because there's only four ways to get out of town.
Yep.
So that could definitely happen.
One of them is broken right now.
Yeah. And if the wind shifted, you know, we wouldn't be here right now talking.
No, I do understand it. But we have looked at that, and I think that we would incorporate very low-fire hazard exterior materials. I think you heard the architects say that we'd use hardy panel, which is a cement fiber siding, and the same thing with a type of fireproof composite wood for all of those railings and so forth. So, I mean, to the extent that the building itself and to some extent, the people in it are safe. There's some other things that we probably would use kind of a, what we call a mini-split system for air conditioning and so forth. In a multifamily building like this, the makeup air for all the dwelling units is provided through the corridors. And we have, so like, you know, air enters underneath your door and then goes out through the window for fresh air. And so all of that air can be filtered. Now, whether it can filter out smoke and dust and ash is another question.
Right.
But it does admit filtered air, which is quite a bit better than most housing units today.
Then I apologize. One more question that we're getting on that kind of topic. Obviously, insurance is very difficult to get, fire insurance in the state of California. We just, I just heard a story that four other carriers just moved out. So obviously, getting insurance is going to be pricey or difficult. So have you guys priced that into your considerations?
Yeah, well, the good thing is... Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that's something that we check on all the time. We had a property out in Piru that was basically labeled as uninsurable. So we always check when we're looking at our parcels. That's the first thing I tell Frank, hold on. I have to check with our broker to see if the property is even insurable. So this property has been checked. It is insurable as of today. Obviously, you know, can we predict the future of the insurance companies? No, but we're hopeful that they'll stay in town. But it is a concern.
Okay.
One other thing to add to that. The new construction generally is rated higher, of course, than older homes, partly because, like we just talked about, incorporating fire-resistant or non-flammable exteriors and, and other things. We also have fire sprinklers, of course, automatic fire sprinkler system, which other older developments wouldn't have. So that's very helpful for the fire rating. I mean, even though we're, we're concerned and we've seen the reason why to be concerned about wildfire, actually, the insurance losses on a day-to-day basis are from fires within the units. And so having a, both the detection and suppression system helps an awful lot with the fire rating.
Cool, thank you. Sorry, I had a question for Lucas. So with SB thirty-five, who makes that decision of whether a project qualifies for SB thirty-five? Is that this body or is that city council? Is that city or is that state or...
Yeah, I mean, so SB thirty-five has been discussed by the applicant, and then obviously, we rolled it out in terms of the bits and pieces of it as well.
Right.
It is up for this body to make a recommendation, and then city council makes that determination.
Got it, okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, can I ask him one?
Please, go ahead.
On page five of fourteen of your presentation, staff report, at the bottom of this, it is talking about eligibility for benefits under SB thirty-five. And to be eligible, quote, "at least seventy-five percent of the perimeter of the site adjoins parcels that are developed with urban uses."
Then there's a definition of urban use?
There's a definition, yeah. "For purposes of this section, parcels that are only separated by street or highway shall be considered adjoining." Urban uses is defined as any current or former residential, commercial, public, institutional transit or transportation passenger facility or retail use, or any combination of those uses. Now, if, if we're comparing whether those uses are of the underlying zoning of industrial versus, quote, "sufficiently commercial to qualify as urban use," it sounds as though that's a discussion item that we're going to have, or that you have not made a determination on that?
Do you see a determination in this?
No, I don't see a determination. And you do have something in there saying unclear.
Right, here's the, and this is, this is responding to your question. This staff report was written in a way as a library of information, where it provides you not only with the state statutes, but also the way in which those state statutes, the important pieces that we felt were important, were then embedded through a series of questions that then were responded to. There were eight in total, right, to help navigate through that. The presentation that I gave, and then obviously, the presentation that was provided by the applicant, a library of information for this body to, to absorb, for the community to absorb, in terms of helping to clear the air for, one, for SB thirty-five, but two, for each and every one of the objective standards in which the city has an obligation to ensure compliance. Additionally, any sort of state statutes that are applicable, and there's a number of them. It's the whole, it's the whole reason why we had the discussion as an informational piece and an educational piece on October fourth. Again, I refer to that. If there are people that are curious about state law and the different regulations that apply there, please stay tuned to the October fourth meeting with the planning commission. There was a lot of discussion, I want to say it was probably close to four hours' worth of information. Not going to be discussed here again, but certainly something to be thinking about as you're going through this process.
Is that a determination that you would expect us to draw and utilize in, in our recommendations to city council?
Yes.
Okay.
One, one point worth adding here. With respect to SB thirty-five, it, it's not super relevant to the substantive aspect of this project. It's more relevant to the procedural aspect because what, what it's really, what SB thirty-five is really talking about for purposes of this project is streamlined ministerial approval.
Right.
And, and we're, so if, if they got SB thirty-five, they really get that. But everything else, the CEQA exemption, that's covered under another exemption, your level of review that's being covered under the Housing Accountability Act, the, the density of the site, the height, the parking standards, all the rest of that, all the, all those development standards and any waivers from them, those are all being covered.
Outside of SB thirty-five.
Yeah, those are all being covered by the density bonus law. So, so SB thirty-five doesn't play a huge role in, in this specific application.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, John. Oh, sorry. One more clarifying question for you guys. And this is probably just more for clarity for the, just general public. What would be the lowest or the max rent for like a one-bedroom unit that you guys are building, for the, for the very low?
Thirty percent of fifty of a one-bedroom?
Yeah. Thirty percent of...
Thirty percent.
Well, that's, that's, that's for a family of four.
Of fifty.
So you're asking for a one-person household?
Yeah, so like the, what would be the cheapest rent for like a one-person household?
We said the fifty percent AMI level of the forty-six-five, I believe.
Yeah, you have fifty percent, you have...
What's the math of that?
So you have eight, eight units are going to be at fifty percent, and then you have forty-one units at sixty percent.
Is it forty-six-five? Is it fifty percent AMI?
Fifty. All I have is fifty and sixty.
Forty-six times two. Ninety-two.
We need to calculate.
Sixty-two.
Quick math here.
Thirty percent.
So about thirty-one thousand.
Twenty-seven, I was going to say, yeah, between twenty-eight to thirty thousand, give or take. Quick math in the head.
Quick math is twenty-seven-six, so twenty-seven thousand six hundred.
Okay, and you divide that by twelve, and you would get what your rent would be.
Twenty-two hundred, yeah.
Well, that's the, the income level.
Income.
Oh, twenty, oh, okay. And then thirty percent of that.
Thirty percent of that.
So you're talking seven or eight hundred a month rent?
So, and that's only for eight units?
Correct.
Or, yeah.
And then you have forty-one that are at the low level, and for a family of four, the median income on that would be a hundred and six thousand. So max rent would be like eighteen?
That sounds about right, yeah. Give or take. Yeah, six ninety is the thirty percent.
So the very, the very low units that, presumably, you are going to designate and monitor and report to the city or whoever, those are all going to be one-bedroom units?
The thirty percent? No, it would be a mix.
Yeah, it's spread across all the unit types. Basically proportional. So we didn't take the very low and put them in the low income, or very, we didn't take the very low and put them in the one-bedroom.
Right, gotcha.
It includes one, two, and three bedrooms.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
But there's only eight of those for the very low. Got it. And the low is forty-one. Okay.
And there is no difference in the cost per month in terms of the finishes of the units?
Not at all. Every unit is designed equally.
Every unit is the same. It's just priced differently.
Correct, that's right.
And then, and then also for clarity for the general public, the rents can go up based on AMI, correct?
They can. So every year, there's new issued TCAC max rents?
Yes.
And that's...
Rent, rent, yeah. So rents don't just stay the same forever.
Right. And there are other limits with that. We give the tenants at least sixty days' notice, so they have time to get ready for it. And then also, the rent increase can't be more often than every six months. I don't know why anybody would do that. Cabrillo's probably just about once a year.
We do annual, correct.
Right.
Annual rent.
Yeah. So there are quite a number of procedural protections that come with being a tax credit project.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Another question for Lucas. In attachment B, this was the Associated Transportation Engineers study, page thirty, talks about level of service standards. I thought we had gone from level of service to vehicle miles traveled as the standard for traffic measurements.
Yeah, so from a, from a granular street-by-street level, it's still level of service. We still use that metrics. And that's still within our general plan. Regionally, it's VMT.
I see, okay.
So we, we use both, and ATE recognizes that and is basically doing the, the math for both.
Okay. Any more questions for staff or for the applicant at this time? We may ask you to come back if something pops up. Thank you very much.
I do have a question here, and I, I'm just assuming it's a typo. On the page...
First extended page?
T, T-one-O-one. And it's the sort of cover page, which has a shot of the, I'm guessing, the, the public amenity room. And it says that the codes, that these would follow the county of Santa Barbara land use and development code. I assume you mean the county of Ventura and/or the city of Ojai.
Yeah, that would be a typo. It's, it's a typo.
On the design...
Which section are you looking at, though, in T?
Is it a material difference, I think, is the question?
No, because if they're following one, I mean, they should, they should follow the city of Ojai and/or the county of Ventura.
Right, and if it's just a typo, that's fine. But if the standards are sufficiently different, what effect does that have on the project?
It is just a typo. Our architect just confirmed it's a typo.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay. And not now, but I think as we look at this in the future, I'd like to know a little bit more about how you're planning on providing net-zero electricity for the site and how you tie into Southern California, presuming you do. But it's a very ambitious idea to, to make this entirely net-zero. And I'm, I'm very surprised by it and pleased.
Covering, covering a roof with solar panels, if it's a one-story building, seems feasible. But to cover three stories with single, still one roof covered with panels?
Yeah, we'll come back and look at it in detail. But to do that, of course, we had to substantially reduce the amount of energy used to heat and cool the units, which we're, yeah, that's, that's how you do it.
Sure.
And it helps that the panels themselves have gotten more and more efficient. Luckily, you know, they have four-hundred watt panels and it's increasing. So that's, you get just about twice as much power per square foot nowadays as you did for a system that's five and six years old. So it helps.
You know, for residential, we, we have a limit.
Or over supply?
Yeah, I mean, we're studying battery, battery storage, but that, that isn't actually part of the net zero.
Okay.
But it does help an awful lot. But we haven't, that's actually not incorporated in the design right now, the battery storage.
And you know we don't allow gas hookups and...
Yep, we do. So this is a...
Non-gas hookup.
Battery storage is more helpful if you're still using...
No, no gas for this. Solar preheat on the hot water.
A quick question for, for Lucas. Has there been discussion of Senate Bill six forty-nine and priority, and do we know how that could or will be used?
You're talking about the local preference?
Yeah.
We don't have something on the books in terms of policy, but it's something the council has certainly talked about.
Right. Right, so second question. If, if that isn't discussed as part of this project, is, would this project be exempt from that?
As it sits right now, unless it's conditioned, it would, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't be required to provide that at this point, unless it's conditioned. And that gets to more of a question for the applicant in terms of how their financing works.
No, I got you, but you say, as of now, if, wait, I'm confused.
As of now, there is nothing in the books that requires local preference.
Gotcha, so there's nothing that requires local preference, okay. But if in the future, for some reason, there is a requirement to provide Senate Bill 649, would that apply to this development?
In the future, what do you mean? Unpack that for me.
Like, six months from now? If it's a requirement that it has to, that new projects have to go through Senate Bill 649, would it apply to this project?
Six from, six months from now, if we were talking hypothetical, and this project had received approval and was in plan check and started construction, no.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Two weeks from now?
Different story.
Different story.
Got it, okay, thank you.
One, one last question, and it maybe is for Lucas here. As we talked earlier, ten two seven oh four G one in the code specifies five percent moderate income housing to get the city granted density bonus. Does that come into play here? Or, or does the state, does the relevant state law include that kind of a requirement? So that this has to be met, or does it not?
That's our housing mix. That's, that's the housing mix, the percentages that we came up with. That's not a state, that's not a state standard. They've got, the state has their own hierarchy in terms of the different percentages of affordable housing.
Okay, does the state hierarchy require any moderate income housing in an affordable development?
I, twenty percent, but it's not a moderate piece. It's, it's a twenty percent.
Twenty percent affordable?
Yeah.
By some measure.
And then it gives like a, yeah, it could be in any of those ranges.
Okay, okay.
So, follow up question on that, and this is relates to step seven on page ten of fourteen. Number one, the jurisdiction has adopted a housing element, and the jurisdiction has met or exceeded its share of regional housing allocation. So hypothetically, if this project were to go through and it was to build, would that qualify us for fifty units for, for, for our regional numbers? For HCD?
So, so you're talking about the RENA calculation, which is the fifty three, that's our magic number for the next
Step seven.
For six, for the six cycle. You're looking at number one?
Yeah, page ten of fourteen.
Yeah, so the way in which, so remember, we have the APR, the annual progress report that we have to provide to HCD in terms of how we're tipping the scales with, with the, you know, the very low, extremely low, low, moderate, above, above moderate. Each of those are drawn down each year. Well, not all of them, but typically we're seeing one or two beginning drawn down each year. Projects like this obviously would draw down certain ones to zero. When you do zero, you don't get to move it over to a different scale, it just becomes zero moving forward. So any projects that come forward in the future that fit the mold that's already zero, still stays zero.
So, so also, this project doesn't satisfy the moderate income requirement that the city has?
Correct.
So, so if, so you would no longer need to satisfy potentially your low income and very low, but then you haven't satisfied your moderate income category, and so therefore?
Moderate as well as extremely low, those are the two.
Now, moderate, would that be covered by ADUs?
Yeah, yes.
And have we met that?
Unless we can provide substantial evidence that I've done in the past that show that it fits into a different category, which is a little bit more difficult, but the easiest piece is moderate.
And if we, and if we do satisfy the majority of the numbers with this build, future affordable housing projects may or may not fall within this standard, or may not fall in the Housing Accountability Act classification, right? Because we've met our numbers.
No, we need to meet all of our numbers. This, this number one talks about meeting the fifty three. All of it. It's not, you satisfy this one, oh great, now we don't have to do, no, it's zero.
To the extent that we never get any extremely low income housing, we've never met our requirement.
And, and that's a requirement of seven.
Right, but if a new, a new builder was to come and offer a new affordable housing project for moderate income, and it's, like, would they, they wouldn't get the Housing Accountability Act, correct?
No, if they were coming in and they said, hey, we're doing all moderate, twenty percent or whatever that ends up being, whatever gets them so that we zero out moderate, we still have the rest of the categories that still have to be satisfied. We're talking about satisfy, when, when this number one is talking about meeting or exceeding, it's talking about the fifty three.
No, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
So it's each of those pieces?
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about, once those numbers are satisfied and new projects come on board, do they still qualify for this?
Oh, you're asking whether or not they qualify through the Housing Accountability Act, given the standard? Then suddenly this opens up the Pandora's box in terms of saying, no, we can now look on a preponderance of evidence, and this is an attorney question in the record, as one of the following suddenly is, is within the, yeah. So it changes the dynamic in terms of how you review an affordable project.
Got it, okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Yeah, I'm not kidding.
Maybe one. Maybe one last question before we get to the public comment. In the staff report, page eleven, this is the following paragraph right after the one John was talking about. It talks about based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions. Where would we find those?
Yes, good question.
Is there something in state law that covers those specific topics?
So, so I think.
I'm not looking for a way to say no here, I'm just trying to understand what the rules are.
Right, so, so I think where that standard comes from is, again, the Housing Accountability Act, it lays out five different ways you can deny a project that's affordable. And that's way number two. And so way number two says that there has to be a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety. And there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid specific adverse impacts without rendering the development unaffordable. Is that what you're referring to?
I remember the language, I'm trying to figure out what it means because it's pretty squishy.
Yeah, we're on page eleven of fourteen of the staff report. It outlines number two.
He was reading from it.
Yeah, but he missed the, he missed the public health and safety, the written, identified written public health and safety standards, meaning that they're written down somewhere.
Just wondering where they are.
Right.
The last two or three lines of that top paragraph.
As used in this paragraph, a specific adverse impact means a significant quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health and safety standards. So, an example of this would be for, like, something, a standard you might find in your stormwater permit, for example. Those are written down, it's an external document, there's specific objective quantifiable standards that need to be met. And if they can't meet the stormwater permit requirements for retaining water on site and preventing it from going offsite, then that's an example of a specific adverse impact.
We could also be talking about screens at the top of fireplaces, I don't remember, I, did I see any fireplaces? In your plan, okay. Any roof vents that require screening?
Yeah, so it's got to be, these are objective, these aren't subjective where you're.
But those I know have numbers associated with them.
Right, but you said squishy, and I want to be clear that this isn't as squishy as you may, as you may think. Objective is objective, it's, it's quantifiable, not qualifiable. So that's, I think that's the important piece to note here.
But, but there isn't like a, a body, like a code per se where we can reference and say, these are all the standards. It's, it's interspersed throughout all the permits that they have to get and all the different aspects of our code.
And some of it in our code is in Title IX, and it's not planning and zoning, it's building standards.
A lot of it is building standards, right?
Presumably that'll all be checked as you go through the process.
Right.
Okay. Any more questions at the moment? Okay, let's then open up this public hearing for public comment. And I have four cards. I'll take them in the order they hit my desk here. First, William Wirick, please come forward, sir.
We don't have a card there for Cabrillo. This, I have public communication.
Right, yes, we went through that one.
We did that.
I haven't put my card in yet.
You want the back of the line or not?
Who wants to make a statement?
Mr. Miley's a very experienced tactician when it comes to public meetings.
He is.
We have a very professional team making this proposal, that's obvious. We have a site that has been long contemplated for housing in one way or another for literally decades now. I think we have an, as a concept, obviously there's issues that always have to be explored, due diligence. But it's a concept that seems to represent the cons, the idea of intelligent design, of sustainable design, of combining form and function as you listen to the details. For example, the three story matter. While we might, something that we feel is generally out of character with the community, you look at the specific site, you look at the specific purpose, you look at the particular design aspects of it, and you go, that's a way of increasing housing supply that does fit a fabric of our community in this context. Like, that's how we have to look at it, rather than just simple rule base, but the overall context. Does this concept add to the sustainability of our community? I think it clearly does. And I think it's something that we should really find a way to facilitate. And it's something that's an important, I think one of the best examples of increased housing supply that we've seen in, with the most competent team to execute it, that we've seen in a long, long time. That's how I'm looking at it from just a common sense standpoint. Three details I'd like to comment on. Overall to detail, number one. When are we going to purge LOS from our code? The Office of Building, of Planning and Budget of the Governor's Office has identified that as a prospal, by, pro sprawl by design aspect, and directed that it be purged from all municipal codes in the state of California. Can we please get on with that? That's just a rhetorical question. Number two. Wouldn't it be great if there were some imagination there with Whispering Oaks, and they might even want to combine some stormwater control, they're going to be way below the level. I bet Whispering Oaks was built before any of the current standards in terms of stormwater. Might be a way of working together to increase rainwater harvesting in that situation.
Worry about water behind that retaining wall.
Well, I bet make the capacity large enough and have specific, you know, pump out, you know, if, if you're having, you know, places to, that's a separate saturated zone, guys, remember? We just, over on Fulton, we just, the OB GMA did a, a test and identified the clay layer and the OB GMA Sustainability Plan that just got approved by DWR defines the, this is a separate saturated zone, so it really can be treated that way. And if you'll permit me, just, one, can I have ten seconds?
Please, go ahead, thank you.
Fifteen, maybe now. I said this before, I say it again, let's look at the, all aspects of transport for moderate, low, and very low income people. That includes, I feel like a record when I'm saying this, electric bikes, electric very low speed vehicles, not just regular cars. So let's please include the charging capacities and secure storage for those alternative transport means in this project, if we could, may, if it's feasible. In terms of secure storage for electric bikes and, and low speed vehicles that can be charged on site, that are typically a tool not available to people in multi-use facilities. So, Ojai's a perfect application for that kind of transport alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is this Dulany Labar? Laberry?
Labar.
Labar. Welcome.
Thank you. I live at two oh six South Plantch. I first came in contact with Cabrillo many years ago, like, two thousand, when I was hired to do a film documentary, which was my career, on the need for farm worker housing in Ventura County. Over the last fifteen years, I've done three or four more short docs on the same topic as projects have been built and increased within the county. And, you know, when you've, when you hear affordable housing or low income, you know, all the neighbors come running out, they're freaking out, they think their property values are going to go down. If you take a look at the projects that Cabrillo has done, not only in the Ojai Valley, but in Santa Paula and, you know, in Oxnau, six cities in the, that I know of in the county have projects with them. And they actually bring up the property values in the neighborhood because they are beautiful. And that was the purpose of me working with house farm workers to do films over time, was to show the increased inventory, what they looked like, talking with the people who lived there and that sort of thing. And I can tell you that when I heard they were doing a project again in this valley, I was thrilled because they are exactly the kind of company that does the kind of projects we can be proud of. When you look at what's up on North Montgomery, look beyond just the buildings, they have such good management at all their properties that they were doing there, they were teaching English as a second language, financial literacy, one thing or another. So that when they built the single family homes, you know, down off of Bald, behind Regal Wine Shop, there's one street with single family homes on both sides.
Zicamore Oaks, I think it was called?
Yeah, they had taught so many up at the Montgomery property about ownership and, you know, financial literacy, that they were able to move some of those people into homeownership for the very first time. That's the kind of ethic that I think Ojai wants to be proud of supporting in our community. And I really urge you to resist whatever reluctance is going to be foisted upon you and then on city council to try and turn down an affordable housing project. This thing is golden, and I really hope everybody comes together on this because it's just exactly what we need. We've got so many single seniors, we've got so many couples and young families. We could really make an impact here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Doug Labar?
Doug Labar, a resident of Ojai City. I think Cabrillo Economic Development is a really good company. I am a retired general contractor, and there's no way I can build what they do. They're, they are, they're, it's, it's a real treasure to be able to have them come into our community and, and build affordable housing. It's exactly what this city needs now. I went over the submittal, like, the hundred and fifty one pages, got familiar with it, and saw that there was an inordinate amount of attention paid to traffic. Well, getting people who can live here in the community instead of having to come outside of the community and be on our roads really helps a lot. And I just wholeheartedly support the project, and I hope you do too.
Thank you, sir. Dale Hanson?
I'm Dale Hanson, I live in the city of Ojai.
We're still sitting.
I just want to say that I fully support this, this unit, and I, I know that it's needed. I'm a real estate agent, I have people coming in my office every day begging for low income housing, or any housing, any rental, but particularly low income is very hard. I'm also, I, I think that this may increase the. I'm also, I think that this may increase the kids in our schools, which we so much need because it will bring some families here with three bedrooms. I know that it will reduce the traffic coming in and out of Ojai, which is another important thing. I'm glad that Eric Knight disclosed about the Humane Society being nearby. And I do hope that this unit will allow for some animals. I know with third stories, maybe not, but some cats and dogs need homes, and they're right by the Humane Society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Larry Steingold?
Larry Steingold, residence. I support the project, the location is wonderful. Cabrillo's done a great job, they have a great legacy and a great track record. My concern is not that they can and not that they will, but that they could have up to 249 people there. That's a very crowded property if they do that, okay? Not that they will, okay, but they can. But number one, I've been to the property, I've walked the property, I've biked the property up and down the street because that's what I do all day because I'm retired. What I would like to see them do is put on a sidewalk from the property to Ojai Avenue. We hear about 326 trips, we hear about bicycles, we hear about walking, we hear about lack of traffic, lack of driving, public transportation, there is a bus. And it's dangerous. I mean, we're spending millions on the Maricopa to have a raised bikeway. I think these people, up to 200 and whatever, or more, plus all the other people who are going to be going to the lounges and everywhere else and parking, need a sidewalk. There is no sidewalk. Go there. Please. And stand there and picture a toddler and a mom pushing a cart up and down the sidewalk, the street. So that's, and the RVs and 18-wheelers and everything else, so they need a sidewalk. Number two, they really do need a three-way light. That maybe works for some parts of the day, doesn't matter, because if there's a backup, they're cutting through to Fox. And they're cutting through the Ojai Valley Athletic Club and Wild. They will because I would, because I've done it. Okay? There's a backup, you can't get out, where are you going to go? You have to go to the light, so you fast this way. So something has to be done there. And the experts are local. RX, their road expert lives somewhere else. We have 8,000 people living here, and they all know what happens on Bryant. Okay? Number three, you've got 33 bicycle racks. Sounds great. You've got 75 kids, you're going to have 150 other people, you're talking about electric bikes, you're talking about all this alternative transportation, which we all want because we're, that's what we're spending money on. They need more bike racks. So a simple thing would be up, maybe 100 bike racks. Maybe 200, but whatever, but they need more than 33 because 100 ain't going to cut it. Because they're going to be tying, the bikes are going to be everywhere, they're going to be attaching them to fences, to trees, and everything else. This is just a practical problem. These are predictable consequences of having 75 kids, plus adults, plus bicycles because that's what the city wants, and that's what we're going to get. So all in all, I think it's a great project, I really do think three floors is too much. But that's the way it is. So if they can control the number of Ojaians going there, so 649...
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
It's a terrible sound.
It's also mine sometimes, so...
It's noticeable.
All right. But anyway, but 649 should be on the agenda, please?
Thank you, thank you, Larry. And Bill Miley?
Good evening. Fortunately, I have lost part of my hearing, so if I run over three minutes, I won't hear much of it. It's about time.
You still have lights, Bill.
What?
You still have the lights.
It's about time, there's a DEDed Affordable Apartment Proposal, which in this case is almost guaranteed to be approved. I support this 50 multi-units, low-income family development, especially the 70 kids that won't be going to Ojai Unified School this likely. Cabrillo is almost an institution in Ojai. Montgomery Oaks, 1993, on Fulton, Zicamore Homes. I personally knew, when my work in public health, two of the founders of Cabrillo back in the 70s. They're hugely credible. Personal comments. My north neighbor on Signal Street has a large house with a separate three-car garage and second-story apartment. It was just put up for rent at $3,300, one bedroom. And it was rented right away. In my opinion, rent levels here in Ojai are caustic to most families with up to moderate-income dynamics. Ojai has rents which are exorbitant rents. 50% of our renters, about 50% of our renters in Ojai are rent-burdened with more than 30% of their household income to keep a roof over their heads. Our pledge of allegiance that we say, that we say each time we have a meeting, says at the end, "Justice for all." This project speaks to that, getting to justice for all. On elevators, I looked up just now, ADA federal law says that any three-story building has to have an elevator. In 2005, Ojai voters, at the request of the city council, put it on the ballot, supported a senior citizen-proposed DEDed Affordable Housing Unit on this two acres. As I remember, 66% of the voters said yes. If this proposal meets SB 35, the conditions of SB 35, for ministerial approval, after this public hearing, what are the ministerial steps to be taken? That was before Lucas answered that. So I understand the commission is to recommend to the city council that there be a ministerial approval, that's the request, and that they would go to the city council for the city council to say yes or no. Wow. Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any other person present here who wishes to speak on this item? I see a hand raised in the back. Please come forward.
Well... Commissioners. I actually own property across the street from this project. And it's interesting how we always seem to find the property that's in the industrial park for the low-income people. But if we're going to do this, if we're going to put the people that can't afford housing in the industrial park, which is not much of an industrial park anymore, a lot of mixed uses, let's make the neighborhood we're going to build in the industrial park part of the community. And what I mean by that is, when I developed our property, I'm the only sidewalk in the entire street there from the bike path up to Ojai Avenue. So if we can, for the 75 kids and I think 250 people Larry said, there has to be a way with a street light that you can make it safely to a stoplight at Ojai Avenue so you can turn left. That's pretty common knowledge. So the other thing is, it's really dark on the bike trail if you're going over to Fulton Street or beyond to Fox Street. It's dark. If you can put lights on the bike trail for the kids. Kids aren't driving cars. So if you're going to put a community in the industrial park, make it part of the community. Don't have it be the kids that were relegated to the industrial park by the old people on the planning commission, sorry.
Ouch.
Oh, that, well, that really hurt.
That hurt.
Yeah, okay.
That really hurt. There's another...
Oh, we got another one back there. I see another hand raised in back.
I really was going to try not to say anything. This is Renee Roth. And I'm really excited to hear about the project. Lucas, wow, you threw together an amazing report. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there. Well done. I mean, I came up here last time and said, "What are you doing? When are you going to get this on the, on the agenda?" You did it. So thank you, Lucas. I don't know if you remember, but I was really upset, and it's here. And you did it, and it was well done, and a professional presentation. It's really exciting to see this all coming together. I agree about the bicycles and the bicycle path and the connectivity of a community of children and adults to be able to jet into town on the bicycle path. You're right next to the bicycle path. What can we do to beef up that access? I've long known that Whispering Oaks doesn't have good connectivity to the bicycle path. It would be nice to connect Whispering Oaks to the bicycle path as well and create that neighborhood feeling. So I do agree with all these comments that have come about. Where's the bicycle path in this? This is the part that I think we could use to connect all of those different areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, is there anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No.
All right. Then we're going to close the period of public comment on this item. I have a question for Lucas, or maybe it's, maybe it's for Alex, I'm not sure. As you know, I, I do what I can to make sure that the applicants and the city both abide by the rules. Unless there's a very good reason not to, which we have to have findings and who knows what. But is it legal for the city to require a developer to develop any facilities outside of the parcel that the developer owns?
The simple answer is no. However, you can always ask the question and then see what the response is. Case in point.
We're talking probably 400 feet of curb and gutter and sidewalk to get, to get to Ojai Avenue and a three-way traffic signal on a state highway.
Lighting on a bike path.
And lighting on the bike path is probably 1,000 feet.
Who, who? Nope.
Oh, thank you, Sherry.
That's me.
Oh, it's you.
Yeah, it was still going. Yeah. Can it be required in terms of outside of the boundaries of the, of the property itself?
Yeah.
No.
Right, okay.
Not unless the applicant is willing to do that. I think that's the simple answer.
Just to add a nuance here, the, the legal analysis you would have to undertake is to determine whether or not the off-site improvements would be some kind of exaction. And you have to do this legal nexus study, analysis, which we don't have to do, but if this, but if the planning commission is considering imposing some kind of off-site improvements as a condition, they can let us know what they're considering, and then we can look in, then the city attorney's office can look into whether or not it's something we can impose.
Can you impose the requirement to put in a sidewalk in front of the businesses that are already existing that go up to Ojai Avenue, like Adamson's, for example?
I think if there are... So it, in terms of what Alex just said, leaving that out and saying, okay, so if you were to do some sort of sidewalk along Ojai Avenue, it would be within the public right-of-way. Not on private property, obviously. So...
And, and the lack of sidewalk that exists today is grandfathered from, from any sort of development requirements because all that stuff's been there forever.
Yeah, I mean, the properties there have been there for much longer than we've had requirements for public improvements, right? So the reality is, is as projects turnover over time, the idea is that you, you get those improvements along those stretches or you do it through some other mechanism.
And a three-way light at Ojai Avenue, we're talking now about a state highway, that means Caltrans involvement.
It's a separate agency, separate process, separate requirements, separate, a whole separate piece outside of the boundaries of even what we have control over.
Right.
Here.
Okay.
So, so the two factors that I was kind of alluding to before are, are nexus, so it has to be rationally related to the project. And the other is proportionality. So it can't be a cost that's so large that it outweighs what the project costs itself.
It has to be reasonable for the applicant as well.
So, so like I was saying, if there are conditions that the planning commission is considering, let us know, and we'll look into it, and we'll try to bake it into the resolution if it's, if we can.
I would be curious to see what a sidewalk would cost in terms of an estimate because that seems like that would be fairly expensive. But I would be curious to see what that looked like. But again, it's up to the commission.
A hundred to 150 yards worth of sidewalk and curb and gutter is a big number, I suspect. I'll bet, I'll bet the Public Works Department could give you an estimate.
They probably could, yes. A rough estimate.
Okay. Well, we've, we've concluded the public comment portion of this. Did we generate any additional questions for staff or for the applicant in all of this?
Yes.
Oh, well, steps right in there.
Okay. The applicant, you mentioned that there would be homework clubs. I would like to hear more about that. Does that include a tutor? Or is that just a group of kids?
So, no, it's not just a group of kids. We have a resident community services department within Cabrillo, and they coordinate with local universities to bring in tutoring to onsite, to our properties. So we work with Cal State Channel Islands, we've worked with Cal Lutheran, just to name a couple.
Okay, good. The number of bicycle storage places that you have, I've heard tonight that there are 33, is that correct? And that perhaps it could be increased. Is there room to increase it?
We would have to look at the site plan. I couldn't commit off the top of my head to know if there's space available on the property, but we can look at that.
Okay. Also, I don't have an electric bike, so I don't know anything about recharging them, but you've got recharge places for cars. Do you also have recharge places for, like, golf carts or bikes?
So is that in... The charging station for an electric bike?
Bike parking is precisely under a PV panel canopy, so we could accommodate power being fed to electrical bikes, for sure.
Okay. And the size of that canopy, does it just cover 33 slots or is there...
It's maxed out at this moment, it is. I mean, we cannot, any increase on that, then we would need to modify something else.
Something else. Would you look at that?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
John?
No, I guess, just a clarifying question, this is just, I think, more for the general public. But are there other affordable housing projects that are in flight with the, the city right now? That you're working on?
I would prefer that we stay focused on this project at hand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, Jamie?
No, I'm very pleased to hear the question of how the development connects with the neighboring properties has been thinking, has been thought about here. Bicycle, bicycles and electric bicycles are not going away. It's what people want to ride. I am concerned about building something that is immediately inadequate because there's just not enough capacity. But anyway, I'm, 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 I'm done.
Okay. And, and... Help me understand, when you spoke of a, a solar panel covering... was that just for some number of car charging stations? Or, I, I thought, I thought I heard something about that would cover 33 bicycle spaces.
That is correct. The, the area, the bike parking area is covered by photovoltaic panels.
Which, up to now, has been unrelated to the bicycles parked there.
No, we, we, we thought about the charging possibility eventually, but you know, in general terms, we're adding space for PV panels wherever we can. Right? And it will ultimately come to the final calculations. We've done preliminary calls about the amount of PV panels that will be, would be required to provide, you know, sufficient electricity for the, for the building operation. And as it is right now, with the, the roof units, plus this little canopy for, that covers the bike parking, those will cover the necessities of the building in terms of electricity.
That covers the residential use as opposed to
That is correct.
charging cars or electric bikes.
Exactly. Not for charging cars, at least not at present time. If it comes to that, then we will evaluate other possibilities of, you know, adding more PV panels and parking on our locations. But at, at present time, it's not considered. The only one, the only area that has the panels outside of the rooftops is the bike parking area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Something to consider. Any, any others, John?
Yeah, sorry, one more clarifying question, and I, I don't know if you answered this earlier. But on page five, where you talk about, on step four, when we're looking at SB 35, at the very bottom, it says it's unclear whether manufacturing uses are sufficiently commercial to qualify as an urban use, or whether they are more akin to industrial uses defined somewhere, defined elsewhere in the government code.
Yes, we did.
Okay. If, but I guess my question is, are we making this decision tonight? Or are we directing staff to come up with a recommendation at a future time?
I thought what I heard Alex say was, it's a minimal impact either way.
Well, it's just whether or not qualifies for the, the
The permit.
Ministerial process.
What do you call it? Permit Something Act?
Right, so, so to date.
Turn your microphone on. I can't hear you.
Thank you. So to date, we have not been following the process under SB 35.
Permit streamlining part, yeah.
Right, because, because SB 35 confers streamlining benefits as well as confering, conferring ministerial approval. We haven't been following that to date, because we have some reservations, staff has some reservations about whether SB 35 applies. Now, if, if the city council or planning commission feel differently, but they can let us know if, if, and if they feel like the findings can be made to qualify for SB 35, then we're happy to reevaluate that and provide some kind of recommendation in a future resolution that we bring forward to the planning commission at the next meeting. I, I just, I'm, I'm turning to Lucas here just to confirming, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lucas, but I think before this meeting concludes today, we were, we were looking to the planning commission to provide us direction on whether to come back with a resolution to approve or deny, and also if they wanted any conditions that, for this project.
Yes, both of those are true. Certainly, I can draw conclusions based on discussion here. Now, at this point, there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion, it's been a lot of Q and A, a lot of sponge action going on here. You're absorbing a lot of information. This is a library, right? In terms of a resource for you to look at, to discern, and then, and then draw conclusions. So yes, the resolution that we're looking to, that staff is looking to bring forward in two weeks' time weighs heavily on where this body stands. I could put together either one, but I also need, I need to understand where this body stands.
And, and SB 35 applicability, it affects something in the timeline, or at least streamlining. It affects ministerial versus discretionary. But if it, if it specifies ministerial, then that says no conditions on a resolution.
Then, then it comes back to staff for that determination, not to the planning commission, if it's gonna be a ministerial.
Right, you'd have, you'd have the usual legal protections and, and Native American relics and all that kind of stuff would be in there. Plus, I'm sure other standard things that have to do with the, the hours of construction and dust and
Those are already baked into the code. It's, it's not a matter of adding those in, it's just to clarify those, those points. I want to also point out that even, even if this body says yes to SB 35, let's just say you're saying yes to SB 35, there's still the, the, the challenge with the affordable housing mix. They're not providing the 5%. It still goes to city council. They've got to make that determination for the exemption. Seems a bit odd, but that's our standard.
Could you, could you talk a little bit about why staff is questioning the applicability of SB 35?
I'll let Alex address that.
So, so the reason is SB 35 lays out a bunch of criteria that need to be satisfied in order for SB 35 to apply. One of those requirements is that 75% of the perimeter of the site be for urban uses. Urban uses, like you pointed out, has a specific definition. That definition includes residential, commercial uses, and other uses. Now, the question arose in analyzing this, is, is manufacturing, because this, this M1 manufacturing is something that Ojai uses, it's not something the state law uses. So is manufacturing something that qualifies as a commercial use for purposes of an urban use, for purposes of SB 35? State law doesn't have a definition for manufacturing. So we looked at alternative definitions, other ways state law might refer to manufacturing. And we found other government code sections that refer to, that say, an industrial use includes XYZ, including manufacturing. So we felt that perhaps manufacturing is more akin to an industrial use. And an industrial use is not called out as one of the uses for an urban use under SB 35.
Okay, but that page also talked about that it was sufficiently commercial. To my way of thinking, that whole section is commercial, as it exists.
So it, it's unfortunate there is no case law.
There's nothing being made there.
Right, unfortunately, there is no case law on this point. So we weren't able to point to something and say, "Commercial is all these things, including manufacturing." It remains an open question.
The, the, the provision of products or services that may be purveyed around this parcel is services. It's hospitality services, it's self-storage services, then there's a residential component. I don't know what to make of the property immediately to the north. But that's another piece of the puzzle. Does provision of services make it commercial? Even though it's in a, it's in a manufacturing zone, what is that business?
I need help on that one. Lucas, can you define commercial versus, where, where do services fall?
As you can see in the staff report, I didn't give a, a clear playbook
No, you didn't.
on this. And there's a reason for that, and that's the reason that you're having the discussion. But I, I also want to just preface it with this, SB 35 is not the end-all, be-all in terms of what we're looking at here. It's one small piece to the much, much larger puzzle here. I don't want you necessarily to get stuck in analysis paralysis for SB 35. Just recognize that there is a challenge there. Maybe at the end of the day, it's, doesn't apply, and move on. Or maybe it does, and you take a leap of faith.
And you still move on.
And you still move on. It, it doesn't necessar... I, I will say this, if you say yes and you move on, there are strict standards in terms of review process that we have not been following. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that we have been. We just haven't been. Because the question, we were calling into question the SB 35 provision itself.
And, and again, don't, I would want to distract you from what really is at play here. Because SB 35 is primarily procedural, the benefits it confers to this project are primarily procedural, and that's more for staff to worry about. This body is making a decision on this, on whether or not the finding, whether or not the development standards are being followed, and whether or not you can actually approve this project under the Housing Accountability Act. And the development standards are gonna be governed by our code and the density bonus law. And whether or not you have the discretion to approve this project is gonna be governed by, I believe the permit's gonna be design review permit, right? That's gonna come before?
Right, design review permit.
So it's gonna be design review permit findings, and it's gonna be your, your ability to review it under the Housing Accountability Act, under these five elements that, one of which you'll need to make in order to deny.
For the design review permit findings, every single one is not, there isn't a single one that we have that's objective. So in terms of how we're addressing the findings, it's gonna be pretty straightforward in saying it's met simply because we cannot, we cannot go in and say, "These are subjective, and this is how it's being made." It's objective. So what I'll be looking at, and if the commission is okay with, I'll be evaluating it from the standpoint of those quantitative pieces. I can absolutely do that. I can't use the four pillars that we've been talking about for other projects. The context, continuity, architectural, and I forget where the fourth one is. There's a fourth pillar, I'm not remembering it off the top of my head, sorry. Can't use those.
And peaking interest, yes.
Yes, peaking interest. So, I think that's what I, I, I think this body needs to just recognize, that there is a narrow understanding and procedural piece that needs to be addressed through the SB 35. Additionally, the objective pieces that, that have been laid out through the staff report that's been provided, the, the attachments that go along with it, the information the applicant has provided up to this point, the presentations that have certainly been laid out in terms of, of the project as a whole from start to finish, all those pieces are a part of this, right? And all of that is then transformed into that resolution, that document that you'll be reviewing in two weeks. So if you're looking through your discussion piece and you're deliberating amongst yourselves, just recognize, throw subjective out the window. Focus on objective.
And, and thank you both for trying to keep us in our swim lane. It, it's, it's natural for us to want to ask more questions than perhaps are appropriate to planning and zoning and Title X. But we are curious.
Look, the reality is, is that this is, we don't see, when's the last time a project like this came forward?
Yeah.
The reality is, is it hasn't. The reason why is because we have a number of rules and regulations that we're trying to wrap our heads around. I heard a council member or two, a couple meetings ago, say housing is complicated. It's ridiculously complicated, especially when you're adding affordability pieces to it. And it's even more complicated when you add 100% affordability, which is what we're looking at. But we're navigating it.
Yeah.
And we started that a month ago, so.
One, one more question for staff. There's only one more for me. Because I, I do want to try to wrap this up with getting
Yeah, yes.
some recommendations here of what we do next. The, the municipal code requirement for a density bonus involves 5% moderate income housing. The municipal code requirement. Does state law override that somehow? Or does that, does that become a condition of approval if we lean to approval?
So, that standard, in this case, is a stricter standard. And we can apply that standard to ensure that we're getting the mixture that, that the council at the time had asked for and demanded. So, at that time, in, I want to say 2014, more than likely, 2013? Well, I'm getting to every response.
Okay.
The percentages, which I think is 15, 15, and 5.
Right.
Right? The idea with something like that is that you're getting more in the affordability piece and less in the less affordable piece, right? Here, you have 100% affordable where they're saying, "Shoot, we want to do more. We recognize that. We want to go beyond that." These are minimum standards. 15% is minimum, 15% is minimum, 5% is minimum. If you're not meeting those, not a state requirement, a local requirement. And local, in this case, rules.
And I'll, let me just clarify that too. Local rules, we're gonna draw distinction here, substantive versus procedural again. Right? So, if state law here is saying, if, if density bonus law is saying, if you qualify for this much affordable, you get this benefit, that's what happens. But the reason we're gonna kick it up to the city council, right, is because there's a procedural component in this ordinance. And this ordinance says, if you don't meet this requirement, then that exception is gonna be considered by the city council. And that's why the planning commission is considering it for recommendation to the city council. So the procedural component of the local ordinance is what's taking precedence. But the substantive component of the density bonus law and its benefits is what's taking precedence. Does that distinction make sense?
Understand, it's a city council decision, but there's, I, I don't see a request for a variance here, I don't see a request for a waiver of that portion of the municipal code. And, and is that implicit in taking this decision to the city council? Or do we have to say something in a resolution if there is a, if the consensus here is a resolution that we take this forward?
I think we have an easy way to solve this. The reason we didn't address is because in our discussion, basically, Mr. Seabird said, "Well, if you're giving more, then it's not a problem." But I think the easiest way to do this, we'll, we will amend our density bonus request to have a third concession, and our third concession is to eliminate the, or replace the 5% moderate with
With 5%.
And then that's the easiest, that's the easiest way to get, get around it, I think. Because we would have the right to do that. The only reason we didn't is when we raised that, he said, "Well, it's more, so it should be okay." So, we interpreted that as it should be okay, but he didn't say, "It should be okay, but you have to take it to the council." If we do this with a density bonus as changing our, you know, amending our application there.
So a third concession.
It'll be a third concession, and that's the way we could easily deal with it. Yeah, and, and just, one thing that I have been trying to be quiet about, but I must raise it because it has become a big deal, is this whole, the, what was on page 11 about the M1 zone. And what the law says is uses. It doesn't say what zone you're in. And you cannot make, I looked at every single use, I also, I looked at your general plan, which says that the coverage is for commercial and manufacturing. So within that, doing, they're doing commercial, which is
Article in the code, commercial and manufacturing.
Right, and then if you look at your table that lists all these commercial uses that can be in the M1 zone, including everything that's in there. So you have to look at it as, what's actually the uses? It doesn't, zoning has absolutely nothing to do with this. And so if you take the U-Haul, you take the tire store, you take the mini storage, you take all of those, they're actually out there, they are all commercial uses. I went through your code. They're all commercial uses that are either permitted or with a CUP in that zone. So I really don't see an issue in terms of the 75%. And this was something that was like sprung on us at the last minute here, so I, that's why I didn't get a chance to say, "Hey, guys, I think you made a mistake here." But also, there is another consideration with respect to SB 35. Remember I explained? It's something so that it'll move quickly and part of it is with respect to requirements that if you don't think something meets a standard, they have a certain amount of time to tell us that. They did not tell us that. So even on that basis, I would say you can't do it now, it's too late. But I think just, everything in there is commercial.
So your contention is that SB thirty-five applies or doesn't apply?
SB thirty-five absolutely applies. Absolutely. It applies in two ways. The first way is that it says commercial uses and yes, they're all commercial uses. So boom, we're fine. We meet the seventy-five percent requirement. End of story.
And the second way?
The second way is because the city has a certain amount of time to tell us if they think we don't comply with one of the standards. And, you know, the first time we heard about this was in the staff report and that was past that time.
But, but question, it's, it's not necessarily just a commercials, it's a commercial manufacturing.
Well, see, the zone says commercial. You got, you got a general plan that says in here, you can do commercial or you can do manufacturing, right?
Yep.
And then you have a table in your zoning code that says services, you know, all these things, and then where can you do them and they all can be done in that zone.
Right.
So what you have to be looking at is what are actually the uses on those properties around? And are those all commercial uses? Yeah. So we don't have an issue.
It's commercial manufacturing, so they could do manufacturing.
They could, but they, they didn't.
Yeah, but they just aren't.
And the whole point of SB thirty-five, what they're trying to do, excuse me, the reason, the reason they, they did the seventy-five percent is because they didn't want to cite developments that are surrounded by industrial uses.
Which is like manufacturing. So question.
None of what is happening there is manufacturing.
No, I know, but that doesn't eliminate the fact that, let's say Adamson's towing decides to sell the property and they sell it to a manufacturing company. And the manufacturing company could certainly go in because they're zoned for commercial manufacturing. So they could certainly build a manufacturing plant right there. And then the same goes for Condor.
Well, and then we would also.
The manufacturing plant.
If we're first there, then they would have to deal with the, dealing with the environmental effects of that. Because, you know, they're coming to the neighbors that are already there. We had a, we had a project in Santa Paula. And it was kind of the same situation, industrial, and we were doing a hundred and fifty units or whatever. And so what we had to do in that was we had to notify the neighbors that the certain plant was within so many feet so that everybody coming into would know. This is the situation. Now, this is kind of the reverse. Okay, you got a manufacturing use that's coming into this.
Right.
So in terms of a health and safety issue with respect, it comes to them.
New residents.
The new, the new owner then has to take that into consideration. Well, I'm right next door to a fifty unit affordable project and I got another senior project up the road there. So that's got to, he's got to take that into consideration as to what he's going to build.
Yeah, so it kind of discourages people, manufacturing companies from going in there and building.
Well, depending on what they're going to manufacture, how, you know. It's light manufacturing to begin with, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, some, now, I guess a lot of manufacturing these days is pretty clean. You know, it's not the old, you know.
Smoke decks.
I mean, a lot has changed.
A lot of steel mills.
Sure.
So, you know, they may be manufacturing, you know, those little things you stick in your phones or, you know, the circuits that we want to get all the circuit stuff from China. Okay, that's going to probably be a pretty mellow kind of manufacturing, you know. But life changes, the world changes and we just got to kind of work with it. But I think we're good, actually. And we will get you that, that addition or change to the, to the density bonus thing so that we can wipe that one off the table.
But then also just to make sure that I'm clear, but the purpose of that was to not, so people wouldn't build in manufacturing areas where they're manufacturing stuff.
Well, that, that was kind of the theory of this country.
Yeah.
Uh, but in terms of what's actually happened.
Her opinion is.
You know, and so if you look at the SB thirty-five language, they're saying existing, current, or former uses. A use to me is when you're actually doing something. So you look at that, you might have a, a parcel there that, that doesn't have anything going on. What was the former use there? You know, you, you look at the uses. And the Adamson, Adamson site is a little strange because it's got a lot of different uses in there, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But all the ones that I could figure out that they had, they're all considered commercial under your own code. So I think we're good. Thank you.
Well, I think the next thing is to figure out if the commission has a consensus on, do we ask the staff to prepare an, a resolution of approval with whatever conditions or of disapproval with whatever conditions?
We're allowed to put conditions into this? I thought I read somewhere in all this stuff that you couldn't.
No, you can. You can do conditions. You just got to, you have to ensure that, I'm not sure what the legal language is, but it can't be something that, that addresses either density or something about the project itself.
Something extraneous.
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't come in again with a condition saying, all right, we'll allow it, but it's going to be two stories. That, that, yeah. That condition's not going to fly.
We can't violate those things, but we can ask for other things in the project that are objective.
The objective is not the, the relevant consideration here. It's, you, if you're going to apply conditions, those conditions can't reduce what they're entitled to. The height, parking.
Right, right.
All those things, right.
Okay, under that explanation, I would like to move that the commission recommends that the staff go forward with approving, wait a minute, I'm getting lost. A resolution to approve the project to recommend that to the city council.
I second that. I second that. Discussion?
Yeah, did we want to talk about the, the SB thirty-five or are you looking at the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay.
And we can, we can add conditions, we might want to do that as part of the resolution.
That's true.
Yes. So tack on some friendly amendments before we vote on this?
Tack away.
For example, to increase the number of bicycle racks, to make provision for charging of electric bicycles at, at a level unspecified at this point, I would say. Uh, but, but, um, what would we say? Not thirty-three bicycle racks, but maybe.
Closer to a hundred.
Maybe, well, I don't know, how many, how many kids with bicycles?
Well, that's true. If you've got seventy kids, they're not all going to have bicycles, you're right. I mean, because some of them are really little and so I, I don't know a number.
I, I don't know that I would put a number on it. Instead, instead something about working with the developer to address the maximum number of bicycle racks.
That's, that's a good way to put it. And, and, and the feasibility of charging stations for electric bicycles.
Yes.
Was there anything else that we wanted to add in there?
Um, I would like to make a, a subsequent motion, is that fair?
Substitute?
Substitute.
Then we vote on this first.
No.
Vote on yours first?
No, no, you don't. You go.
You make a substitute motion, we vote on that first.
You can make a friendly amendment, is that what you want?
Friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay, friendly amendment. Um, I want to make a friendly amendment to prepare the resolution to continue this at a future date. And I would like to, uh, take out the SB thirty-five because I believe this is a, a commercial manufacturing use in the M-one zone.
I don't accept that friendly amendment.
I would like to make that motion that it doesn't, SB thirty-five does not apply.
Uh, I think, right, I think, I think, I think perhaps for this discussion, I don't know if it makes sense to have an SB thirty-five determination because it's, it's procedural and this body isn't making procedural decisions. This body's making substantive decisions on the project to approve it or deny it.
Oh, totally agree, but you do ask that.
We, we do, and I, and I.
To know if this manufacturing zone is determined to be industrial and I think it does.
Right. And, and as I, as I think about it, I don't know that as staff, we made the right decision in putting that in the hands, in the hands of the planning commission because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to have the planning commission make determinations on procedure. It makes more sense for the planning commission, as they always do, to make decisions on the substance, voted up or down with whatever conditions.
Oh, I agree. I get, my concern is, is that if those properties are sold based on the current zone, you could have manufacturing right next to residential uses.
Right, right. Um, if, if, if it's okay with the commission, I think perhaps there's something we'll take up because as, as the applicant pointed out, this is the first time that they're hearing about it. If, if, if it's okay with the commission, let, let us take that up with the attorney for the applicant separately and uh, we'll, we'll bring back some kind of resolution for you the next meeting. But if you could address the, whether to vote up or down the resolution with the, you know, of course continuing for the next meeting and then any other conditions that you'd like to see. So the applicant's also aware of it and we can talk through what those conditions might look like with the applicant.
Okay, any other, any other conditions?
So how does that work?
You did not accept the SB thirty-five stuff.
No, and he, he took, he took it off.
He took it, yeah.
No, no, if, if, are, are you, are you okay to withdraw that amendment?
No, I, I want to, I want to keep it on. I, I don't, I think it, I think that the, yeah.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Well, if we don't get a second, then I guess it's.
Yeah, it needs a second.
Yeah.
No second.
Seen a second yet, do you? Will you take me to lunch?
Yeah, they can't have stuff like that.
If it dies for lack of a second, then staff is going to handle it anyway.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's where we are. What do we have right now for friendly amendments?
We have the bicycle racks in terms of looking at the maximum number that could potentially be applied.
For non-electrical.
And then we have the feasibility for electric bicycle racks as well.
Okay.
So I, I don't know what that number looks like, but I think it's something we can work with the applicant to.
Okay, maybe one other friendly amendment is to have staff look at the reasonableness and proportionality of providing sidewalk on one side of Bryant Street, on the east side of Bryant Street to Ojai Avenue. And I leave it to, I would leave it to staff's discretion as to how reasonable and proportional it is. I suspect it's unreasonable and overly burdensome.
I tend to agree with you and I do accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you need a second on it then?
Um, the seconder has to accept the friendly amendment as well.
Is the amendment to propose the sidewalk going from?
Yeah.
Studies the feasibility and proportionality and reasonableness
Yeah.
of sidewalk gutter and curb.
That's important, especially if you have someone who's handicapped or children, you know, I mean, that road is awful.
And if it's, and if it's unreasonable, we still don't do it, but at least I'd like to have staff look at it.
Okay. And then can we also make a condition about a stoplight, like the stoplight?
No, that's a highway thing.
That's a, that's a Caltrans thing.
I think within the timeframe of what we're talking about, continuing this item to the next hearing.
Yeah, I think.
Stoplight would, would not be within the realm of possibility.
It's a, it's a good idea, but it's not doable, would be my fear.
Jamie, you, you were the seconder, so do you accept the friendly amendment?
I'm accepting that as a friendly amendment to the original seconding.
And we can vote.
Very good. Any other thoughts about what we want to put in this? All right. Sherry, let's have a roll call.
Can I just also identify that there is standard conditions that would be included with this as well? So when you see those, don't think of that as a surprise, okay?
The standard conditions assumed.
And this is?
Sherry, let's, let's have a vote on item two then.
Okay, just to verify, it's confirmed that it's continued to a date specific because one of you said continued to another meeting.
Oh, yes. Uh, we should add that friendly amendment that we continue this case to a date certain November fifteenth. Okay?
Yes.
Is it fifteen or eighteen?
Second?
Great. All right.
Yes.
With that, with that, I hope final friendly amendment approved. Let's have the vote, Sherry.
Kulisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. Work with staff. And we'll be back in two weeks to do this all again. Okay. Uh, agenda item three, let's, um, we're still in session here, folks. Agenda item three is future agenda items.
Yes. We'll take a look at it. November fifteenth, we have one item on the agenda.
I see you have three eighteen slash three twenty.
Yeah, look, it's three twenty, but.
Three eighteen is the flagpole?
No, three eighteen is what staff had identified it as, as the address, but it's been addressed at three twenty now.
Yeah, okay.
So we use it kind of internally to, to keep it square, but eventually it'll just become three twenty.
Maybe two legal parcels or something.
No, it's not a matter of two different parts. No, that is not the case. That is the only item we have on the fifteenth. Um, the rest of the items won't be ready until the sixth of December. And the two items that you're seeing there is a design review permit for a new detached two-story ADU at three eleven Park Road, as well as a concept review for a new industrial building in the M-one zone, which is two twenty Bryant Street.
Ooh.
Is two twenty closer to Ojai Avenue?
Would be, yes.
Uh, by a parcel.
The numbers get bigger as you go south.
Yes, they are.
Two twenty, two twenty.
Two twenty.
Adamson is two fourteen. So two twenty is that big yard.
Yes, it is the one that's in the front. That's all we can, I'm not going to go any further. But just know that, that concept review has gotten to the point where we're ready to take it forward. The others, the other properties that are identified as pending under pending future agenda items, you're seeing them as well as I am. There are, those items are just about ready. Um, we're just waiting on one, literally one thing for each of those, for them to be, uh, ready to go. And there's other ones that we haven't identified here yet, but they are getting close. We have a lot of.
They'll slide into that bottom, that bottom table as they're ready.
This stuff will slide in, like, yeah, super simple. Super complicated, right, in terms of how we review things and the process that's, that goes through some of these other ones. I'm not seeing logjam, to be fair. I know we had talked about that in previous meetings. I think these, each of these projects are going to end up providing the necessary, um, review. I will say this, the, the next meeting, I'm more than likely going to be bringing forward if this body is okay. A. Huh?
On the fifteenth?
Yeah, on the fifteenth. The idea of cancelling a meeting, a future meeting. Typically, we end up bringing something like that forward and talk about.
Something right around Christmas and New Year's.
Christmas and New Year's is somewhere right around there. Depends on when everything falls.
Yeah, we canceled January fifth, this calendar year.
Right. And so we may very well be looking at that for, for this one. So just heads up, I know it's not on here, but that's typically something that the chair and I talk about beforehand, but I'm just bringing it forward for the full commission to make you all aware.
Okay.
So.
Uh, director's report?
Um, yeah, I don't see that here. The, I'll save it for a different meeting, but things are coming, um, things are coming together in terms of staff. things are coming together in terms of staffing, and I, I don't want to announce anything yet until it's been officially taken care of. But there's some things that are in the works, and I'm super excited about it. So. Once this all becomes official, I look forward to making those announcements and making those individuals, um, forward. And plus, you guys haven't even met, um, one of our newest planners, which is Kyla. And so, I've already got her scheduled for this, this meeting in the near, in the near term. Some of the commissioners have met her, but not all. So, I'm excited to bring her forward with a project that you'll, you'll be seeing in the future. I can't mention it because it's, it's not on the agenda. I wish it was.
Yeah.
Um, but it's an advanced planning project that'll be coming before this body first. So, exciting stuff.
Okay. Commissioners, reports, anything at all? Final thoughts? I, I want to, I want to echo what one of the applicants said tonight. This was by far the most comprehensive and understandable admin report that I've seen in eight years, and I've seen a lot of them. It was very well done. It led us through the decision tree. And, and to the extent that that approach is applicable on future cases, I think what you did tonight was make it much easier for us to understand what we needed to understand to make informed decisions. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think you, you did a really good job of, of showing us the very narrow swim lane that we had. According to, you know, all of the new laws that have come out.
As, as hard as understanding what we get to do is understanding what we don't get to do.
Right, yes.
Which apparently is a lot.
Is a lot, yeah.
It is a lot.
Absolutely.
Okay. Our city council liaison?
I'm still here.
You're as persistent as the rest.
Yeah.
Yes, I am. Uh, well, thank you, commissioners and Chair Quillisi. I really appreciate all your attention to detail. It's, it's, I think we went into extra innings tonight, so thank you for your time. And thanks to the Cabrillo team in Abstentia. They, they laugh quickly. Um, yes, quite detailed. And Lucas and Alex, thank you. And Maura and Kyla in Abstentia, thank you so much for this beautiful staff report. I agree with chairs, the chairs' term. I like your term "decision tree." Good. Might use that. And it really did help us, lead us through the process, so thank you. And thank you to interim city manager Mark Scott, because I know your, your fingers were in there, sure.
Not much.
Really?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for a very productive meeting. I look forward to two weeks from now. So, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Then at 9:36, there being no other business before the commission, we're adjourned.